All right, welcome, everybody. Clerk Reed, could you please take the roll?
Yes. Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons. Alderman Saffron.
Here.
Alderman Revel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. And Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Eva Quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Welcome, everybody, to the May 26, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. Like many of our recent meetings, this one, too, is virtual. In order to do a virtual meeting, though, Alderman Wilson, could you move a motion?
Yes, I moved it. We suspend the rules to allow us to proceed with a meeting by remote access utilizing the Zoom software.
So, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are meeting virtually. It's nice to be with everyone. I know when the clerk did the roll, we were missing Alderman Fisk and Alderman Winn. I had spoken to both of them and believe they either they're not on already, will be on shortly for this meeting tonight. I'd like to give, as I have been recently, an update to the community on this number-one priority, which is the health and safety of our residents related to the pandemic that we are all going through. Last week, I participated in a call with Dr. Anthony Fauci and other mayors from around the country, organized by the Bloomberg Harvard Cities Initiative. Dr. Fauci's message was very clear. We are moving from staying at home to limited interaction with one another. And in doing so, it is essential that we keep a healthy distance from one another. That's at least six feet. That we wear a face covering when we're outside, that we wash our hands regularly and properly, and that we isolate ourselves if we are sick. The public health authorities very much want this to be a smart and intelligent reentry back into, you know, our nor into business and everything else that we did prior to having to lock down. So it will be a phased incremental approach, and we'll be talking about that this evening. The importance of following these health and safety guidelines is especially clear today as we learned on Friday of the passing of a beloved Evanstonian, Hecky Powell, a member who committed and dedicated his life to serving others, both from his famous restaurant Hecky's and through his active involvement in our community. I am going to give each of the council members an opportunity after I make this initial statement to say any words they want to about Hecky or anyone else that has passed. And I'll give our viewers an update on how many fatalities we have had so far. You know, Hecky's passing that we mourn is among 30 confirmed dead here in Evanston. That also includes a renowned Northwestern professor and scholar Riyadh Ismat, who escaped Syria to teach here in Evanston, and a devoted mother, Mary Cherry Santiago, who was just weeks away from seeing her son graduate from the THS yesterday. The losses in our community elsewhere are, in my opinion, a very strong call to action for each of us. A reminder that our work is far from done, and that it is essential that we all continue to do our part to slow the spread and to save lives. In this update, I'm going to share some good news, some bad news, and what we can learn from the 1918 pandemic in our response to COVID-19. The good news is contact tracing. Since our first confirmed cases of COVID-19, the Evanston Health and Human Services Department, with the help of the Medical Reserve Corps, which existed prior to this disaster, has performed contact tracing on Evanston's confirmed cases. So we have 678 confirmed cases, and all of those have then had contact tracing done. This has resulted in over 1,000 people being quarantined or receiving isolation orders and instructions, and it's greatly reducing the potential spread of the virus. Secondly, the infection rate. The rate of infection here in Evanston is significantly less relative to our neighboring communities. In Evanston, as of today, we have 90 confirmed cases per 10,000 residents. In Skokie and Chicago, the numbers 125 and 156 respectively. So our infection rate is lower, and that's positive news. It is due, I think, in part to the fact that we do comprehensive contact tracing on all of our confirmed cases. It's a reason you see a big push by the governor to hire contact tracers statewide. If anyone watching this is interested in being a contact tracer, and they are paid positions from the state, and the state is organizing it, go to DPH, Department of Public Health, dot Illinois, dot gov, forward slash COVID-19, and there will be information there on how you can register your name and interest in becoming a contact tracer. While we here in Evanston are okay in contact tracing, Chicago needs contact tracers and other places do too. You can do that work remotely from your home. So you can do it around the state if you're selected. Slowing the pace. The time it takes for confirmed cases to double now here in Evanston is around a month, meaning that our efforts to slow the infections is working, and we are flattening the curve, relieving the strain on our healthcare system. Our average daily confirmed cases has declined. It was at a peak of 15, and now it's about 12 confirmed cases a day, and that's based on the seven-day moving average. The number of cases, if you track them, has fluctuated and intends to increase when bulk testing is completed or state testing capacities increase. The state is on these calls with the governor's office. And if you watch the governor's press conferences, they're pretty pleased that the number of tests in Illinois is significantly rising to the point where we are one of the highest states in the country in terms of our daily number of tests that we're doing. Lastly, the Northeast region is on track to move to Phase Three, the recovery phase on the Restore Illinois Plan, this Thursday. So in two days, if the metrics hold up, we will move into that phase. This means, among other things, that effective on Thursday, gatherings of up to 10 people will be permitted. Still have to practice strict social distancing. More businesses will be allowed to reopen. Restaurants may be open for outdoor dining only. We're going to talk about that this evening. And additional outdoor recreation opportunities will be available. However, all of these activities must operate with the strict health and safety guidelines provided by our public health officials. As we move into Phase Three, it's critical that each of us remains vigilant about practicing physical distancing, wearing a face covering when in public, and washing our hands frequently, and not leaving your house if you're sick. The bad news. Since our last city council meeting, we have seen the number of fatalities rise dramatically from 15 on May 11, when we had our last council meeting and I reported to you, to 30 confirmed deaths today. Our total number of confirmed cases now stands at 678 with a fatality rate of 4.4%. The fatality rate here in the state is right around that. It's about 4.5%, and the fatality rate in the United States is 6%, which is incredibly high. And again, that fatality points based on the number of confirmed cases. As a point of reference, at our last city council meeting on May 11, we had 480 confirmed cases and 15 deaths. So over the last two weeks, we've seen our confirmed cases rise 41%, and our deaths rise 100%. Deaths will always be a lagging indicator, but it's the most painful metric because behind each of these numbers is a mother and a father and an aunt and an uncle and a grandparent and a friend and a neighbor. Someone no different than all of us on this Zoom call or anyone watching. I want to talk just a second about what we can learn from history because there's some work being done by the Evanston History Center, by Northwestern University, by the Daily Northwestern to look at the 1918 influenza H1N1 pandemic, which was a terrible pandemic and killed hundreds of thousands and millions of people around the world. It's important, I think, to understand how Evanstonians fared during that pandemic, also referred to as the Spanish Flu. The Daily Northwestern, last week, put out a multimedia presentation. If you didn't see it, it's an excellent presentation on the history. It was a 10-minute. The relevant takeaways from that is don't get complacent. Evanston imposed two separate citywide quarantines in 1918, one in October and then one in December that ran all the way through the holidays. Do not gather in large groups. I can't stress that enough. The second quarantine back in 1918 occurred in part because of large gatherings, such as the celebration of the end of World War I, which was obviously incredibly notable, and people wanted to get out and celebrate, and a former visit by, or visit by former President William Howard Taft to Evanston, which drew thousands or hundreds of, hundreds, if not thousands, of people to Northwestern University to hear him speak. Inevitably, those large gatherings further spread the virus, and they had to quarantine in December. Lastly, act quickly to address outbreaks. In 1918, Evanston was the last community on the North Shore to issue a quarantine notice. They allow in schools, churches, and movie theaters to operate, even when there were over 200 cases and 18 deaths here in Evanston. And we were the last to do that. The public health authority's response in 2020 is very much informed by what it's learned over the last 100 years. Not only with the 1918 pandemic, but other diseases since then. Many of the mistakes made can be avoided if we heed the advice of our public health officials. That is why I'm asking all of you and your applicable organizations to do your part and comply with the directives and the guidance. I do not want to see us encounter a second wave, which would require us all to return to our homes. We want to do everything we can to avoid that. What's next? The city and organizations throughout Evanston, including our businesses, nonprofits, and houses of worship are working on plans to operate safely and in accordance with all guidelines issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health through all phases of our recovery. Tonight, the city manager and city staff will detail some of the incremental phased reopening plans. In closing, remember, no one knows where in the continuum we are. What's generally agreed upon by the experts is, one, there will be outbreaks. Two, to manage those outbreaks, we initially need to limit the amount of physical interaction between people to 10 or under during this recovery phase. Again, it is going to be a phased incremental approach. And three, that with limited interaction, available testing, and contact tracing, we ought to be able to contain the spread so that it's manageable for our healthcare system here locally. We owe it to all of those who have passed, their families and our neighbors, to continue to follow the guidance of Dr. Fauci and our other public health officials, including our own Ike Ogbo, and continue to do our part to slow the spread of this infectious disease. I'd like to open it now to give council members a minute if they'd like to just talk about the, any passings here in the community or the pandemic themselves. If you just want to put your hand up, I'll call on people that are interested. Alderman Fleming.
Yes, thank you. I just want to extend my condolences to the family of Hecky Powell, but also to the family of Stan Azim. He was a ninth ward resident. He worked at Evanston Public Library, classmate of mine, and as well as all the other 30 people that Mayor mentioned who have passed away from COVID-19. And I'd like to add on people who have just passed away during the pandemic. As we know, you're not able to have a funeral and gather and really support loved ones who you might have lost during this time. And I know it's very challenging as we had a family member who we tried to have a Zoom funeral for, and it was very challenging. So I just want to extend my sympathies to all people who have lost during this time. We know it's, it's an even more profound loss as you just, you can't really comfort each other, and that's so important in this time. So as you agree, you just think the city council is with you. As we reopen, we will look to, I'm sure, have some kind of larger gathering when it's appropriate to honor all the loved ones. Everyone had a special place in our community. And so as we all come back out into the community, we will miss each person's presence. And just to again extend my personal sympathies, Pastor Daniel Ruin and I over at Grace Lutheran Church do have a small space. If you ever walk past his church on Chicago, excuse me, South Boulevard, and you want to just pay your respects, there's a wreath there that people have laid flowers that if you want to come over and pay your respects to anyone who you've lost during this time.
Thank you, Alderman. And thank you for mentioning, commemorating all of those who have passed away. And sadly, the additional, additional people will pass away because of this pandemic and at the right time and at the right place. I think it's important that we, as a city, recognize all of those passings. Any other comments from folks? All right. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. Not to prolong this anymore. It's a very difficult time for us in the city. I do want to extend condolences and prayers to all of those that have lost a loved one in the community and to our community broadly. This has become very real for every member of our community. And I will like to give condolences and prayers to the family of Hecky Powell, Cheryl and Hecky's children and grandchildren, his extended family, his nieces and nephews, everyone. Our hearts are with you during this time. Hecky was really larger-than-life, iconic, just a giant. He did so much specifically in our neighborhood here in the ward, but just throughout Evanston. His work and commitment to the small emerging entrepreneur, to the returning citizen needing employment, and specifically more and more that I learned of his heart for the youth really just has been a fine example of goals that we should continue striving for. And I hope that we will. I know that we will, as a city council, stay committed to the values that he was consistent with over decades of his service and leadership here in Evanston. So I'm heartbroken. I consider him a mentor, a leader, an example, a friend, and I know that we all are. So a big hug around Evanston right now in the name and the memory of Hecky Powell.
You're muted. Sorry. Thank you, Alderman Simmons. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I want to echo those sentiments that Alderman Fleming and Ruth Simmons just shared. And for all of these, everybody who saw the New York Times page with the 100, almost 100,000 names, and it's just, it's very powerful. And Alderman Simmons, I think your hug, let's extend that to the people in the community also because we have hundreds of people who are currently struggling with this. Some of them are going through a very difficult time. And this is a terrible, terrible disease. If it affects you in one of the more egregious ways, it's just beyond words. So I'm not having a good, I'm not expressing this well, but, you know, we're with you. Your city never stopped working. We're continuing to work. Your council members, your mayor, your staff, your clerk, everybody is really doing our best to make sure that you all stay safe and have the tools you need to take care of each other. So thank you for everything everybody's doing.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Braithwaite?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the members of the Evanston community, just acknowledging Sam and to the Cadet family, as well as the Powell extended family, close friends, and all those that knew Hecky well. Nothing new to share, but I think it's worth repeating. He was a business giant in this town. He was an advisor to mayors, counsel to our city council. And I think Alderman Simmons mentioned before his passion for the youth. It's, I was there at his shop, and I think a young man said it best that Hecky taught him to speak the truth. And for those that knew him well and engaged in conversations, he did walk in his own truth, not always agreeing with it. But I would say with every argument that I never won, I've never met a man that would walk away with a smile and a hug, and I believe that's just one of the meridional characteristics. So I look forward to celebrating his life at the appropriate time with the others that we have lost in the community. And I think that this time, this, the moment that we're taking should remind us all how important it is for us to continue to stay at home, take care of ourselves, wear your mask when possible. I was very concerned this past weekend with graduation, and it's hard to contain the energy of youth. But I think as a town, we need to continue to stay vigilant if we want to get past this pandemic and get home safe. So thank you very much. And, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman. Anything else? We'll move on. Okay. I'll just end with, I think it was Alderman Ruth Simmons who used the word iconic. And Hecky Powell was as iconic to this town as the lighthouse is, as the arch at Northwestern is, as the venison sign is, you know, in a human form. So it's a huge loss, and I know the whole community is mourning his loss. So, all right. Speaking of loss, I am going to turn it now over to the city manager for any updates that she has. One of them, though, is the loss of one of our former city managers, and someone that I didn't have the opportunity to know, but I know Alderman Rainey worked with. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Storely, and I think Alderman Rainey is going to give some words to Joel Asprey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did want to note the passing of former city manager Joel Asprey. He joined the city in 1979 as the assistant city manager, and then was named city manager in 1982 and served until 1990. So he had a tremendous run at the helm of the city at that point in time and wanted to share a short story, a little tidbit that is somewhat timely and relevant. About 10 days before he passed away, he reached out to me. I didn't know him. He sent me an email just out of the blue, and I am going to share what he wrote because I feel like the letter that he wrote speaks volumes to who he was and the kind of person that he was. So this is, this is in his words. Dear Ms. Storely, almost 40 years ago, I was in a position similar to the one you are in now. Three years after hiring me as his assistant, Ed Martin left Evanston for Corpus Christi, Texas, and I was named acting city manager. Ed engineered my temporary promotion, recommending me for the position over a much more experienced man with a longstanding service to the city. I thought I had a daunting challenge ahead of me with 18 aldermen to face every other week and not a very happy gentleman sitting just down the hall. As it happened, things went fairly smoothly during the ensuing few months. And in May 1983, I was promoted to the permanent position. This came as a surprise to me and a lot of other people in the city since the field of candidates recruited included a number of very accomplished city managers from cities of comparable or larger size. Somehow, I lucked out. Under the current circumstances, it would appear to me that your situation is far more complex than what I faced so many years ago. I gather from what little I have read that the city council wrestled at some length with the initial task of selecting a recruitment firm. And I have to assume that the pandemic has caused even more delay in the selection process. At some point, you will have or will become the longest-serving interim city manager in the history of Evanston, and that is no small accomplishment and in that great city. From what I have read, you have a supportive mayor, and I have high regard for Heidi Voorhees, this former colleague from the suburb of Evanston just up the lake shore. The founder of her firm, Paul Riem, was a recruiter engaged by the city council when I was selected in 1983. I write with no particular purpose other than to wish you well and to encourage you to persist in the face of whatever adversity you may encounter in your current position. Whether or not you are a candidate for the permanent appointment, I am sure that I am far from alone in expressing your gratitude for your willingness to take on the temporary assignment in a city that I will always love. If you are a candidate, I wish you well. The job is an opportunity of a lifetime, and I hope that things turn out well for you in any case. I am long retired and living in Indianapolis now. And unfortunately, I get to Chicago only infrequently to visit my children. I'm certain that there is little or nothing I can do to help you other than exchanging war stories from 2100 Bridge Avenue. But if you believe otherwise, feel free to contact me. In the meantime, take care in this strange time, and please pass along my regards to Alderman Rainey, who has now represented the Eighth Ward for more than 30 years. She is an outstanding elected official. Sincerely, Joel Asprey. Super nice, 10 days before he died. I appreciate that. Out of the blue, people reaching out to me from time to time, providing support and encouragement. And just so happens that this one came in the craziest of times. So I just wanted to acknowledge his service to the city. And Alderman Rainey and I are collaborating with former city manager Judy Aiello on a proclamation that will be provided to his family.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you, Erica. That was very touching to hear that email read. Is there any other update here? I've got non-congregate housing update, Erica.
Yes, we should have Betty Bog on the line to provide an update on the housing that is being done as part of the work that Connections for the Homeless is doing. Betty, are you on the line?
I am here.
Great. Do you want to share the presentation, or do you'd like me to?
If you could, that would be great.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and start while I pull it up.
All righty. Well, thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Interim City Manager, Mr. City Clerk, and Alderman. I really do appreciate this opportunity to briefly update you on Connections' response to the COVID-19 virus. One of the things that I would like to address with you tonight are understanding the basics, how much the response has cost, what services are being offered, who is being served, and then move on to what's next, which is transitioning from hotels to permanent housing, then building on this public-private partnership that we have forged during this time. You got it there, Ms. Storely?
I was just going to let Luke know that the screen sharing is disabled for me, so I need him to enable it, or he needs to share the presentation for us.
Let me see if I can pop it up here easily. I don't know if he has it while I'm looking for it. I probably did this.
Okay, he just passed it along, so I can share now.
Great. All righty. Let me get back to my meeting. There we are. So we're just past the second slide and onto the third. There we go. So this next slide is really talking about how much the Connections COVID response has cost and where the funding is coming from. So as you know, the city of Evanston has been very proactive and generous in funding part of our hotel costs to the tune of about $685,000. Connections is also paying for hotel rooms. And we have hired approximately 27 staff since the beginning of March. That's a third of those staff, we're happy to say, are Evanston residents. And then we're also providing meals, three meals a day, to our hotel residents, meals to our congregate shelter residents, and meals to some of our house participants. So we've each put about $700,000 in the kitty. And Connections has done a tremendous job. We're very grateful to our community for stepping up and helping with a financial response to this deep need. So on the next slide, we can talk a little bit about what the services are that we're offering right now. We have always done eviction prevention and rental assistance work, but in the last eight weeks or so, we've seen about a 250% increase. We're spending about $25,000 a week, and that number is going up on helping people with rental assistance and in the first month round and preventing their eviction in the first place. We have opened an emergency congregate shelter in Lake Street Church where we have 20 beds for men and women. This shelter operates 24/7. And then, most famously... Um, and then most famously, our hotels add shelter operations where we have about 230 some people at a couple of local hotels, 165 adults and 67 children. You should also know that we've expanded our food pantry and we're getting 20 to 50 visitors a day at our duly administrative offices, which we've converted into a food pantry. We've served in the last two months, over 460 individuals there with, um, food, case management, unemployment support, filing for stimulus checks, um, getting onto the waitlist for shelter. We have a lot of services that are happening out there as well. So, a little more detail about the services that are being offered on the next slide. We have invested about $184,000 in local restaurants through delivery of three meals per day. So, that is a lot of meals. Whoa, there we go. Um, we are providing healthcare and mental healthcare to people in both the hotels and in our shelter with our psychiatric clinic. We're doing house calls at the shelters with our nurse, um, and at the hotels. We have a partnership with Erie Family Health for primary and behavioral healthcare. We have had onsite testing of our shelter residents through Advocate Aurora Lutheran General and we have our own in-house mental health staff as well as partnership with Jocelyn Center and Trilogy to deliver mental health care. We are currently housing, um, individuals who are utilizing our partners' services as well. Um, we've housed folks from the Moran Center, from Family Promise and Peer. We are partnering with every, you know, the, one of the great things about Evanston is how many amazing not-for-profits we have and how closely we work together and that has gotten even, even deeper collaboration, as you know, Mayor, from your, uh, twice-a-week calls on the not-for-profit, um, support that is, is really been tremendous. We also do a lot of things that you don't really think about, mail service, laundry service, we do transportation support and lots of case management. This is a, next slide is a summary of the, some of these services that I just talked about. I don't need to go over them again, but you can see there's a, we are seeing a lot of people, there's a tremendous amount of need. Um, we are rising to meet that, um, which is, but this is why we hired, uh, over 20 people is to, to meet with this demand. So, let's talk a little bit about who are in our emergency hotels and shelter. We're currently serving, uh, 245 folks in two different hotels and in our congregate shelter. Erica, can you move to the next slide? Thank you for driving this. I'm terrible at driving presentations, so thank you. Um, about two-thirds of those people are African-American, a little, under two-thirds are connected to Evanston and of those who we've been able to assess, about half of those folks have a disabling condition. The age range in this, this graph is sort of in reverse order. You can see that we have, um, 45 individuals who are over 55, the vast majority of people between 25 and 54, and then, uh, a few young people, ages 19 to 24, who are especially vulnerable and then all those kids that are in, um, with us right now. The next slide shows, really starts talking about what comes next. So, we're in the process of evaluating everyone, especially in the hotels, for what their housing pathways might be. One of the things that is of primary consideration is how vulnerable the individual or family is and we do a very lengthy assessment, a third-party assessment to determine, right now from what we're seeing, about 28% of all of the individuals, but close to, I would say, it looks, it looks like, sorry, I'm having people reading this. We've assessed about half the people and of that half, 28% is vulnerable or, and then another 15% highly vulnerable. So, the, I mean, most people that we're housing right now in these hotels are, are quite vulnerable. And of, uh, real, real importance is the amount of income. So, about half of the people we have sheltered have no income, um, and we, we don't, I don't know right off the top of my head, how much of that is temporary and how much of that is like, I have an ad income for five years. The, the other half of folks approximately do have income and the range of income, $2,000 to $2,600 a month, uh, the average of that being $950 per month in income. So, as we look to what can come next, on the next slide, there's two real primary paths based on vulnerability scores and the income. If you qualify with especially a disabling condition and you've been homeless for a long period of time, permanent rental supports called permanent supportive housing is one option. Unfortunately, the inventory for permanent supportive housing units is quite low, although we do anticipate HUD may bring more units online, uh, earlier than we thought because of the pandemic. The other option in permanent rental supports is housing vouchers and we know that HAC, the Housing Authority of Cook County, has vouchers that can, you can move into a HAC building or you may get a voucher that kind of travels with you and you can live where you'd like. So, those are really our two permanent rental support options. We think about half of our households may qualify for those. The temporary or really no rental support, the other half of our households are rapid, can be, can benefit from rapid rehousing, which comes through federal pass-through dollars generally, ESG and CDVG. Those usually are, uh, short-term rental supports of three to 24 months and we do what's called, uh, progressive engagement for that. So, if you need three months' worth of rental supports for $900 a month and then the next month you need 200 in that month, after that you need zero, we are in constant contact with you to find out what your ability to pay is and the goal there is to taper off quickly. We also have state and private short-term rental assistance, which usually, uh, results in, comes in the form of first month's rent and security deposit. Currently, the state of Illinois has lifted many of their, of their restrictions so that we're able to pay six months in advance of, uh, with, for people's rent so that can give them a cushion, they can get, go to a job training program, they can get back on their feet. And then, of course, there's market rate housing with or without the move in support of first month's rent and security deposit. So, if you have a good enough income and you need market rate housing, we are looking for ways to find that for you. So, on the next slide, we're just figuring out what our next steps are right now and, um, what we really want to do, can you go to the next slide or, thank you, is build on the momentum of this successful public-private partnership that we forged during this crisis. The city has really stepped in in a big way. Connections is all staffed up and ready to start moving people into housing and what we need is for the city to direct some of the CARES-funded CDVG and ESG pass-through dollars to rental assistance and to help us pay for those staff to support the transition to housing, how we'll get people out of hotel rooms. We would like continued support for hotel rooms through the end of the FEMA reimbursement period. We would love you to consider designating some affordable housing fund resources for a flexible housing pool. This has been done in other municipalities and we can go investigate what's worked and what hasn't in those municipalities. And then I know that we're already working on this. Serflex is doing, um, some work convening a landlord network where we can encourage, uh, landlords to participate and have flexibility regarding rental qualifications. So, taking people with poor credit, taking people with criminal backgrounds is very important for us to successfully move people out of the hotels. So, with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
So, are there any questions for Betty? Alderman, breakaway.
It's, it's more of a, a quick comment, Betty. You mentioned the recruitment of landlords. I have no idea what the statistics are in terms of vacancies in Evanston, but I would encourage you, I think you, you shared that very quickly and maybe worth repeating, if there's an opportunity for landlords to contract their units with you, I would suggest working closely with our staff to get that word out and then convening a virtual meeting where you can go into detail with your programs, how you provide, provide support for your, uh, you know, for your clients and I think your services have gotten much better over the years. So, please let me know and I'll be sure to, uh, advertise it in my ward newsletter.
Thank you for saying that and you're absolutely right. Landlords are, um, a very important part of this solution and if you think about, you know, the kind of income we're seeing that people have, if, you know, if people have an income of $900, they can afford $300 or $400 a month in rent and there aren't units that cost $300 or $400, which is why the rental subsidies, at least temporary rental subsidies, are so important to this effort.
Eddie, is there a similar, and then I'll go to you, Alderman Fleming. Uh, is there a similar, um, organization to Connections in Skokie around the north side of Chicago, but maybe Chicago is different because they may have an actual department of, of housing homelessness? Um, and if so, are they undertaking the same effort that we are here to, uh, house, you know, the homeless that were either on the streets or in shelters before?
So, there are four shelter providers in suburban Cook County that are providing hotel rooms. Connections in the city of Evanston are providing the largest number of hotel rooms. I would say, um, the most similar organization to ours is a place called Housing Forward. They're out in Maywood, they work in Oak Park, Maywood, um, out there quite a bit and, uh, they're, um, all of these shelter providers understood at the beginning of this pandemic how dangerous it was to run large-scale congregate shelters, which is why they've moved all their folks into hotel rooms.
Are they doing that in Chicago as well?
They are doing it in Chicago and I can't recall the scale. There's one specific hotel in, on the north side, like on Michigan Avenue, boutique hotel that they have moved a bunch of people in. At this point, we're at capacity for our hotel rooms and so are all the other providers. We're, we, there's still demand beyond what we can provide.
Alderman Fleming.
Betty, on your slide, you had the breakdown of people who are Evanston-connected and those who are not. Can you, um, explain that? Obviously, our dollars are limited and, and not that we want anyone on the street, but obviously we want to have our Evanston-connected folks to make sure they're housed. So, how do you, how do you screen for that and then determine who is placed?
Well, uh, when we screened for that, we're asking them what their connections to Evanston are. So, did you go to high school here? Did you live here until you just got evicted? Have you been living on the corner of church in Arlington for how long? So, we ask that of everyone that we encounter, no matter where we, for, for any program that we have. Um, we did not, uh, tell people, we did tell people who were coming from Chicago that they needed to return to Chicago to try to get hotel rooms there. Um, we did, we have not told people specifically, oh, you're from Skokie, you can't come in this hotel. So, we do have people from other municipalities who are in the hotel as well.
Okay. And then, um, I think on one of the slides you mentioned, um, oh, shoot, I'm drawing a blank, I should have wrote it down. Um, there was a slide, oh, that you talked about the number of people, so like 242 or whatever you have. So, how many of those people kind of are new to you all together? I know you have, you know, you're regulars who you see at the soup kitchens and all, which is not usually around 200 people from my recollection. So, how many of those are like, you would say totally new to even being homeless with the pandemic or, you know, cars or such?
It's so interesting, you know, Mayor Hagerty called me right after this all started, right when we started putting people in hotels and, Mayor, you asked me how this big uptick in homelessness and at that time I hadn't seen it. And there were about 100 people that we knew were street homeless that were the first people that we put into hotels. But then there came this second wave that really caught me by surprise, which was people who were very precariously housed and a, a, a really, a story I keep hearing over and over again is I was staying at my, with my grandma at the nursing home and then the nursing home went on lockdown and I couldn't stay there anymore. Or there's some family where, you know, it was okay for me to stay, but it was 10 people in a two-bedroom house and they were just like, no, this isn't working now for this, for the, you know, in, in this pandemic. And so, we had this whole second wave of people, I would say half these people, that kind of came from these extremely precarious situations, some of which will resolve when we, you know, if you can go back to living in the nursing home and the nursing home is like, okay with it, then you'll go back. So, some of these folks will sort of resolve and be able to go back to these less-than-ideal but still not, um, not literally homeless situations.
All right. My last question for that is about the students or the children that you have. Um, are you all working with the district? I'm assuming some of them are already connected with social workers, but if some were in semi-stable housing and now are totally homeless, have you all connected with the district to get them supports?
We are connecting with everyone we can to get supports, especially to children in hotels. Many of them are quite young, preschool age. Um, we have partnered with YLU and they have offered support for, and therapy for all school-aged children and their caregivers. So, we're really happy with that. Um, I will say, if any of you can imagine being locked in a hotel room for six weeks with a few little kids, I mean, it's certainly better than, um, living somewhere like in a parking garage, but it's not ideal. So, we definitely want to, even though we are doing our best to, to serve people, it would be much better for folks to be living in apartments. So, it's, it, it's something we feel a lot of urgency around because the living situation is just much better. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank, thank you, Betty, for that presentation. That was really great.
My pleasure. Thank you for everything you're doing.
And thank you for your, your part, your partnership with the city and, and, and all the other, I know Evanston Community Foundation's involved in providing some of the funding, lots of organizations. It's a great example of whole of community coming together to help homeless. All right, uh, interim city manager, is there anything else that you have?
Yes, I do have one last announcement and it's regarding, uh, summer programming and beaches. Uh, so, we have a lot of questions and a lot of information to share about the recovery process and how reopening of city services, uh, will happen, uh, in a phased approach. So, we're going to talk, uh, first Lawrence is going to give a short presentation about summer stuff, uh, and then later on in the agenda, when we get to SP4 and we start talking about restaurant reopenings, we'll go into the rest of, uh, the city operations that we're going to talk about in the phased reopening because there's some more issues that the council needs to discuss with regard to that. Uh, so, I'll turn it over to Lawrence right now, uh, to share his summer update.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, interim city manager, clerk Reed and members of council. Uh, I'm going to share, I got a quick presentation about, um, summer updates and summer plans. So, um, so Luke, if you're lifting, it won't let me share the screen, so if you can help me.
Lawrence, can you try again now?
Okay, got it. Thank you. It worked. Can you guys see the screen now?
Yes, we can.
All right, good. Let's go ahead and... So, um, first I want to just give everybody kind of, lakefront operations, an update. Um, normally, under a normal non-pandemic operating season, our beaches would open this past weekend for swimming activities, but currently, you know, we're, we're unable to do that. So, our current plan right now looks at, hopefully, as long as the health and safety of the community continues to move in the correct direction and we're able to move forward through the phases as, uh, planned, opening our beaches on July 1. Um, currently, we will not be selling any daily passes at any of our beaches except for just the beach office at Dempster Street and then at the Clark Street office. So, again, let me repeat that. For those who do not have season passes, we will not be selling passes or entry for single days at the beaches. We're trying to eliminate that hand-to-hand contact as much as possible. We have protection screens in place at Dempster as well as Clark Street, so that's the only place where daily passes will be sold. Uh, we're hoping to, uh, move forward with beach tokens to... We're hoping to move forward with beach tokens to go on sale June 8. We will have them go on sale online, as well as being able to, once they are purchased, you'll be able to make an arrangement to pick your tokens up like a will-call type fashion or a scheduled fashion at the beach office or the ecology center. There will be limited capacity at each location. One, just for social distancing purposes, but as well, our beach area, surface area, the sand areas are much smaller due to the high water levels. Greenwood Beach is closed for the season. If you've been there, there is no Greenwood Beach today. The water has totally covered the beach. And then there's also some safety concerns in which, you know, has been presented, presented to you previously in our lakefront plan was presented by the city engineer. We will keep our scholarship program, so anybody who qualifies for free and reduced lunch will still qualify for free tokens. We still will offer our team passes at our community centers once the beaches open. So those programs will still be in place. Currently, our boating operations, the Church Street Boat Ranch has already opened. It opened this past weekend. That is where boat owners who have motorized vessels are allowed to launch their vehicles into Lake Michigan, and as well as the Dempster Street Boat Launch was our, which is our non-motorized boat launch. It will begin as Operation June 1. All of our restrooms, except for Clark Street, are closed along the lakefront and will continue to be, to be sold. Summer camp.
Clark, can I ask you one question just on the beaches? So how much do you usually charge for a summer beach pass, and what will you charge this year?
It's $28. Usually, we have an early and a late kind of a time period. The, the beach token cost is $28, and it'd be $28 this year. And then there's also a non-resident.
Okay, thank you.
Summer camp. We plan to, as long as we, again, continue down, the community going down this healthy path in terms of recovery, the plan is to start summer camps on July 6. It will be at a significantly reduced rate. You know, because we register so early, we registered February 2. We have a significant number of folks who are registered for camps that now with our social distancing requirements, we will not be allowed to accommodate. So as part of our process, we're going to be prioritizing Evanston residents first and foremost. And we will be contacting registered families via camp. So by each camp, they will start reaching out to those families. One, to take a poll to see if they're still interested. And then two, to let them know if they will be able to, we can accommodate them or not. All the activities, our staff has put together a list of activities that are socially distant activities. So we are going to do our best to engage the kids and play, and have, make the kids have a great time in summer, but we're also trying to keep them safe, as well as make sure they stay socially distant. And also, for this summer, because our senior population is our most vulnerable, we're going to utilize the Levy Senior Center as a place for summer camp this summer while we continue to program for our seniors virtually. And we hope to be able, as we continue to go down the recovery of our community, to allow our seniors back into the Levy Center at a later date. We've come up with an idea, because we know we're going to have such limited slots available, we're going to offer, we were, I came up with a creative idea to offer some free recreation activities. Right now, I am considering those to take place at Lovelace, at Mason, and at Cayman Park. We'll work closely with our Ridgeville partners to utilize Cayman. We were thinking north, central, and kind of south parts of town. We're thinking three days a week, two to three hours a day. Where we would show up, we will have the community register for this program. We will take 20 or 30 kids, max, just depend on, on the interest. But we will operate outdoors in pods of 10 so that we can provide some free recreational opportunities. And so as years pass, our mobile recreation will go from park to park. It, it will go from park to park. This year, we're going to focus that at three locations. And we really are going to offer these programs for those who did not or are not in a summer camp. Give these kids three times a week for two to three hours some registered, I mean, some, some structured play activities for residents to register for this program. Update on our farmer's market. As most of you are aware, we opened and started the market back on May 2. We have currently accommodated 48 out of our 63 currently registered vendors. We're averaging about 2500 to 2600 participants these last couple of weeks. So as people are getting more comfortable, the weather's warming up, we're starting to get more of our farmers in. We're starting to see our numbers go up. We will be expanding in the month of June. And what that expansion means is, right now, as you see, there's 48 vendors currently operating within our current setup. Well, that has worked very well, and we've been able to manage social distancing very well during the current setup. But as these last 15 vendors, as their produce become available when coming to season, we have to find a place for them. And what we're going to be doing is spreading out along University, closing the street, and spreading those vendors out along that path. So we will be expanding the market along University and blocking the street as we move into the month of June. Our Produce Mobile activity has been taking place at Levy for the past couple of months and will continue to do so during the month of June and July at this time. Our summer food program. Again, all of you are aware, we, since the COVID-19 pandemic has struck the community, we've been serving breakfasts and lunches out of four locations to our young people, ages 1 to 18. We will continue that weekly distribution process through the month of June. So every Monday moving forward, each kid, the families can come up. They will have, pick up a bag that, which contains 10 meals, a breakfast and a lunch for the week. And they, and then we are also tracking the number of families that are, that we're serving that way. We're going to continue that process through the month of June. Come July 6, we're going to move into our traditional summer food program, which is a daily program. Now, for those who are not familiar, the traditional program, the state requires us to congregate and serve the meals. Well, this year, they are allowing us to operate it as a grab and go. And so, yeah, people who are, who have been taking advantage of these current food programs will can, will be allowed to continue to do so. But instead of them getting weekly meals, it will be daily meals, and they can just still come pick it up and then take the meal home. And so we will start the daily distribution on July 6. And also, at that time, each summer in, in the years past, the city has always provided the breakfast. So we will move into us providing the breakfast also at this point in time, where the current process, we are purchasing those breakfasts from the district. All of our community partners that we service through the summer food program, we will continue to do so. But we're, instead of the city delivering those meals to those different locations, we're going to work with those community partners and ask them to come and pick it up. Our pickup locations will remain the same four locations that we're currently distributing from. Our special events. Everything that is on the calendar is currently just tentative. We've canceled all of our city-sponsored events for the month of June. But as, if, if, if the road to recovery continues and we're able to move into a different phase, we, we have not canceled things entirely at this time because we are hoping that we'll be allowed to provide some sense of normalcy if we continue to, on the road to recovery. If that is the case, obviously, we have to work closely with our health department and our recovery team will communicate those updates and decisions as we get closer to. And then the last part of my summer update, I'm pretty proud to announce once again, our department is being recognized as a gold medal finalist for the third time in four years. And so that just means we are one of the four. We're being recognized as one of the top four agencies in our class. The one change this year is, in years past, we've been operating as a Class III community, which is 75,001 to 100,000. This year, we are a Class II community, 50,001 up to 75,000. But that's some good news for the department. We're excited to be announced as a gold medal finalist in our parks and recreation world. And with Madam City Manager, that concludes my presentation. I can take any questions.
Do we have any, Alderman Fleming? And Lawrence, three's a charm, right? So it should be it.
Lawrence, I know you mentioned that you guys were going to start calling, or your team was going to start calling people who have registered. Assuming you get more people than, who are interested than we maybe have space for, you just doing first come, first registered, first served kind of a story?
So we are not necessarily just going to take that approach. We obviously want to take that into consideration. But, you know, we want to, you know, be very careful. One of the things, we have participants who qualify for TAD Fund. And so, you know, TAD Fund kids are kids that are identified by school social workers that need to be in structured summer activities. The TAD Fund covers the cost for these. These are families that already pre-qualified for free and reduced lunch. And so we're going to make sure that we include those kids as part of it if they are a TAD Fund kid. We want to look at, you know, this through, working closely with Kimberly, looking at, you know, this through an equity lens and make sure we are being fair and equitable as possible. I understand right now, there's really no easy way to do this. If we did a lottery, you know, somebody's going to be upset. If I do first come, first served, someone's going to be upset. So what we're going to try to do is, one, take the poll and see if folks are still interested. And if they are, we will start to then utilize some parameters in which we'll decide who could get in or who doesn't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Lawrence. It's a really thorough report. I know a lot of people are looking forward to getting back, getting back into some kind of summer rhythm. I've had a number of questions from people about the lakefront restrooms. I know that Clark Street Beach has been open, and I've had some questions about whether we're going to be able to open any of the other restrooms, at least maybe one further south at South Bullard or at Lee Street. What, is there a plan for that? And what, what are the things that the city would need to do? Because now we're getting even, I mean, we've had many more people on the lakefront. And I recognize that restrooms and the coronavirus are presenting a whole new host of, set of problems. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, currently, under the guidelines, public restrooms are recommended to be closed. So Clark Street has remained open because it's the only location that we keep open year-round. It has heat, and so it remained open. We made the decision to keep that one open even during the pandemic crisis.
And it has been much appreciated.
Yeah, and, and so I get the sensitivity in the usage of the lakefront. But right now, you know, we have not brought on our summer staff at this time. We, we are starting that process now. But I just do not think bringing on these bathrooms at this time is a good, safe thing to do. As we get staffed up and as the guidelines, we move further into a recovery phase, we can start to bring on those guy, opening up those bathrooms at that time. But right now, public restrooms, under the current guidelines, are deemed to be closed.
Okay.
That's the decision we have made as a community, as a, and as, working with the health department.
Yeah, I think what, what I'm hearing is after this very nice weekend, people are discovering that there is no restroom open, and so they are finding other places. And I've been sent a number of pictures. So it's, it's just something to keep in mind. And I know that your, your staff is doing a great job. But if there, if there is some way that we can do that and keeping everybody safe, I think that's, that's, that's a good priority to have along the lakefront.
I got it. I mean, I will make sure I have a follow-up conversation with Ike and his team about this. And, and as we bring staff on board, see if we can slowly start to bring things online. But the decision was made very consciously because the guidelines say they shouldn't be open.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Rose.
Lawrence, can you, with social distance porta potties?
I mean, so, I, I think so. The, the challenge with, with porta potties are they are managed and cleaned by third parties. And with the current guidelines that you're supposed to, I'll take how we're supposed to clean public surfaces in our own facilities, cleaning them every two hours? I'm not aware of, if, if it's a wise decision for us to put porta potties out there and pay folks to come in and try to clean them as the guidelines state they should. And so, again, understanding the public restrooms are an issue based upon how we're using our public spaces outdoors. I will really want to work the recovery to see if they are recommending us to come up with an alternative plan to opening up the bathroom. And if that is going down the path of renting porta potties and figuring out how we keep them clean, you know, we, we, we will consider it. But that's where we are on that, on that issue.
Okay, I think if you, maybe if we contact the porta potty companies too, they probably are, have some ideas about this. I, I, I've heard exactly what Alderman Wynn has heard and haven't seen all the photographs, but one is enough. And I, I just don't want to create another health problem solving, solving a different health problems.
Oh, it's, it's happening. I observed it personally on Lighthouse Beach yesterday, so it's, it's certainly happening. Alderman Rose Simmons.
Thank you. And excuse me if I missed this regarding lifeguards. Could you let us know when the lifeguards will take over so that we aren't necessarily policing the beach and folks that are getting in the water? And we are managing that with the appropriate paid staff and not a higher-rated police officer? One, they're ready to pay, and two, it's not necessarily a police matter. Could you give me any feedback on that?
Sure. Alderman Simmons, we will be, by next weekend, we're going to have an alternative plan in place to staff the beaches to keep people out of the water without using the police. And we will use them as emergency services only. Lifeguards are, we started calling lifeguards back to work today, and we will continue through that process. But because we are trying to keep people out of the water, I have put together a different strategy of having the beaches staff for next weekend.
With the lifeguards and not the police?
Yeah, with, with non-police personnel.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Lawrence? Okay, seeing none, thank you, thank you, Lawrence, for that update and all the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Thor, Ms. Thorley, anything else?
That concludes my announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Erica. Courtney Reed, do you have any announcements this evening?
Yes, a few announcements. First, I just want to thank you, Lawrence, for that presentation, as well as Ms. Boggs for the presentation earlier. I do briefly, before I start, want to send my condolences to the Powell family as well and my voice there. Heck, he was a mentor of mine too, and someone who, you know, in order to honor him, I'll make sure that I am always working to bring up the next generation of leaders in our community, and I'll make sure that's a lifelong value because of Mr. Powell. community, and I'll make sure that's a lifelong value because of Mr. Powell. I want to announce that there are a few folks who submitted public comment. I'm not going to read them, but they will be submitted to the council. You know, Leslie Shad, Bonnie James, Lily Aaron, Jacob Brodsky, and a number of other folks submitted comments regarding the Dutch Elm program. Those comments will be forwarded to all of the council members if they are ready or not. I want to say thank you to friends of the clerk's office.
Sorry. I guess, no.
I want to say thank you to friends of the clerk's office at the BGA and Matt Topic, who this weekend stood up for vote, for folks all over Illinois and opposed amendments to the FOIA legislative, to the FOIA legislation that would allow municipalities to opt out of responding to FOIAs during the pandemic, which especially during this time, it's important that folks stay informed and trust the guidance of their government. But I also have the, so I want to thank them for that. Want to announce that the clerk's office is holding an event tomorrow at 6:00 PM that a number of folks here might be interested in and in their community. It's municipal elections, what's on the ballot and how it gets there. So we have a few election attorneys and lawyers from the State Board of Elections who will be coming out, join us digitally and discuss all of the rules for getting on the ballot in the upcoming election. So that is tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and it will be recorded, and so folks will be able to utilize that moving forward for the upcoming elections. And then lastly, I want to let Evanston voters know about a state bill that was passed recently with mail-in ballots for the upcoming election. Unfortunately, the state can go the full way and will not be mailing ballots to every registered voter, but what will happen is registered voters will get a number of notices and reminders and, and the application to apply for mail-in ballot. The clerk's office will work with the community to make sure that as many folks as possible take advantage of that, and it will help folks register online. Also, when that bill makes Election Day in November for this year a state holiday, so schools will be closed for that, which will, which will allow those facilities to be utilized for voting. Fifteen-year-olds will also be able to be election agents since seniors, since some of our seniors may have been. This upcoming election cycle, younger folks are now allowed to serve as election judges. So we'll be spreading the word about that as well. And so that concludes my comments for today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Clerk Reed. Thank you for sharing with everyone the, the good news that came out of Springfield in regards to allowing people to, to vote by mail and doing more to let people know that. Again, I agree with you. I think we want as many people for public health purposes to vote by mail that, that want to here in Evanston. So appreciate your office's help in getting that word out. We're now going to turn to public comment. Luke, correct me, because I wrote it down a little bit ago, but we had a little less than fifteen people. Joshua Bose Carlson, mispronounced that last name, was the last person on the list that I wrote down. I don't know if there were any additional since then?
Yeah, I've got about fourteen, Mayor.
Okay, terrific, terrific then. Thank you. And I see Joshua here on my screen, so we'll get to you, but you are, you are the last one on public, on public comment today. So per our rules, we will get, grant everybody up to three minutes if you need three minutes. And if you get to three minutes, I'm going to say, hey, thank you for your comments, and we're going to move to the next, next speaker. So the order that we've got, I'll read off the first three so you guys know when you're coming up next, but the first will be Rachel Rosner, then Billy Lynch, and then Virginia Mann will be our first three. So Rachel, if you're on, welcome.
I am a Ninth Ward resident, a lifelong Evanstonian, and the newly elected president of Citizens Greener Evanston, a group that has over twenty-seven hundred members. And it's very different giving comments at, at the end of the meeting and really hearing about all the wonderful work you all are doing. I want to start by thanking you for that, and I can't imagine how difficult it is to create a fair and balanced budget under these extreme circumstances. Citizens Greener Evanston is moving forward in some exciting ways, including a movement towards centering equity and environmental justice, and this is why I'm here tonight. The decision to cut the budget to inoculate elm trees in Evanston will have the greatest, gravest impact on our neighbors with the fewest resources. Everyone deserves to breathe clean air that mature, mature trees provide, easing the symptoms of asthma and other respiratory issues. Everyone deserves the cooling benefits of tall trees, especially as we have more extreme heat days. Everyone deserves to have large thirsty trees reducing the impact of flooding in their area. And every homeowner deserves the boost in property value that comes from large, beautiful trees. We know there are some Evanstonians who, when faced with these budget cuts, will simply pay the nearly $400 to get their parkway trees inoculated, while many others could not consider such an expense. In the face of COVID-19, we realize the danger of shortsightedness. We are now paying a heavy price for our collective lack of preparedness, and we know that the most vulnerable among us are paying the heaviest price. I know that this crisis is all-consuming, and I hate to ask that we start to think about the next crisis, but we must. For as the climate crisis looms, it will be, and in fact, already is, our most vulnerable citizens who will bear the gravest impacts, extreme heat, flooding, and more. Large trees are a simple part of the solution. Citizens Greener Evanston is working with Evanston Community Foundation to create a fund to support the care of trees in Evanston. We can't begin to hope to raise the $300,000 that was cut from the budget, but we are committed to helping as much as possible. As a lifelong Evanstonian, I have witnessed catastrophic elm loss. Many streets, including the one I grew up on, were once lined with elms that are no longer. It's less pretty, to be sure, but the real reason to protect our trees is that it's an essential way to protect our people. I look forward to working with all of you in the coming weeks and months. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations on being the new leader of CGE. Next up, we've got Billy Lynch, and then we've got Virginia Mann, and then Rodney Green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a few, few points I'd like to offer tonight in regards to the budgets and how Local 742 fits into the conversation. Before I get into that, I want to first acknowledge and, you know, recognize the hard work that is being done by our city staff, led, you know, under the direction, the leadership of our interim city manager, Eric Storley. The budget team, you know, they're putting in a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of long, long nights, a lot of difficult decisions, and they, their efforts should be recognized, and I do appreciate all the work that they're doing. And they deserve to be acknowledged for the work that they've done thus far. In regards to, in regards to what we're facing now, the budget crisis we're facing, how Local 742 fits in with that conversation, I'd just like to offer a couple of points. First, we talk about this being, you know, a shared sacrifice by all city employees, this being a shared sacrifice by everyone who's trying to do their part to get this correct. I just want to make it known that, you know, we've been doing, we've had to increase our sacrifice, we've had to increase our workload, our commitment to the city since the very beginning of this coronavirus hit, when it hit in the early part of March. And we've been going at that very hard now for, for over two and a half months. We've been asked to do more. We've been asked to raise the standard of service delivery that we provide to the citizens and the residents of Evanston. We've been asked to, to raise the bar, so to speak, and we've done that, and we will continue to do that as we fight this, this pandemic. And we will continue to fight that for as long as it takes, and it's going to be a long time. But I just wanted to express that, you know, I get, I have the opportunity, the privilege to represent some very professional, very competent people in Local 742, and that, that truly is a privilege. But I can say firsthand that this coronavirus has taken not just a physical toll, but a mental toll on all of our folks. We've always worked as firefighters in a, in a very dynamic environment, but that, that environment is as dynamic and unknown as it has ever been. And that places a tremendous mental toll on our members. And in the environment we work in now, what the, the issue and what's, what's not comforting is knowing that after our, after we finish our 24 hours of, of duty, we're bringing things home to our family that we don't know is, is, is safe. We don't know if we're going to infect them or expose them, and that's not a comforting feeling. And our members have been asked to step up and do that and maintain that level of service, maintain that level of professionalism as we've had to deal with that. And I can say firsthand that we haven't wavered in that commitment, and we will continue to make that commitment to the city because they deserve it. Second point that I just wanted to offer real quick, as we talk about this, this budget crisis and talk about how we all can be part of the, the solution, I would ask that as we look at, at this problem through this lens of equity that we, that we look at this problem through, that we don't perceive, we don't look at this as, not that everyone's treated the same, but that everyone's treated fairly. And I think there's a difference there, because what's fair to one group may not be fair to another. And I know that we're all trying to do our part, we're all trying to make our contribution, we're all continuing to make our contribution, and you have my commitment on behalf of the local to continue to do that. But there is no other group out there that's doing what firefighters are doing right now. Aside from mitigating the emergencies that we always do on a daily basis, we're the ones who are responding to people's homes and coming into direct contact with coronavirus, COVID-positive patients. We're the ones who are literally going into nursing homes and crawling over patients in order to get them out of the nursing home, get them the care that they need, and bring them back to a, an emergency room. We're doing that on a day-by-day basis, and we'll continue to do that. And it's, and quite frankly, it's an honor to do so, but, but it is, it is mentally taxing, and, and, and it deserves to be recognized that there's a lot of effort that goes into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Billy. We appreciate all the work that the firefighters and yourself are, are doing to keep our community safe and protect everyone. We've got, we're way over our three minutes, so I've got to move to the next, next speaker. And again, just asking everybody to keep to the three minutes that we've allotted. We've got Virginia Mann up next, then Rodney Green, then Roger Sosa. Welcome, Virginia.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the, thanking the mayor, the city council, the staff, members of Tree, members of Citizens for Greener Evanston, and Evanston residents who've all put a lot of effort in a very short time into finding a solution for saving our elm trees. As you know, three-year elm tree injection program with Arboretex works. It has an astonishing 99% effectiveness rate. It saves trees, it saves tax dollars, and probably most importantly, it is distributed equitably across the city. I've talked with several of you the last few days, and I understand that there may be an opportunity to resolve this issue in a favorable way to inject all of our trees, and I hope that that is an accurate summary, and I hope that all of you will support it. The three-year injection program does work. I was troubled by the memo I saw in the packet today regarding another option. I sent you my comments via email, so I don't think there's a need to go over that today. I have some very, very severe concerns about some of that proposal, so I do hope that before you make a decision, you will give consideration to my comments on that. I think it's appropriate this day after Memorial Day for us to be talking about elm trees, because the first Americans to give their lives for this country were patriots in the Revolutionary War. Many of them held their meetings under a large old elm tree in Boston Common, which became known as the Liberty Elm. It was such a symbol of American freedom that when British left Boston for the last time, they cut it down. Thomas Paine, the great patriot, who really was a vocal and important vocalist in favor of American freedom, wrote a poem about that liberty tree. And I think it's important just to read this one little bit of it, says, "But here, but here O ye swains is a tale most profane, how all the tyrannical powers, kings, commons, and lords are uniting a male to cut down this guardian of ours. Let the fair and the near all unite with the cheer in defense of our liberty tree." The Liberty Tree is long gone, there's a plaque remembering it in Boston Common, but what's not gone are a couple thousand beautiful Evanston historic elm trees that, as the folks from Citizens for Greener Evanston said, so eloquently said, "Play a critical role for our environment, our, the ambiance of our community, our good health, our housing values." And so I hope that you will take all that into consideration and support injection of the tree program. Any citizens listening in who want to learn more can check out our website, www.evanstonelmtrees.com. Again, that's www.evanstonelmtrees.com. I thank each of you for your efforts on this, and I hope that together we can find a good solution for all of the issues resolving around our trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia, and it's always nice to have all the poetry here at Public Comments. All right, we're going to go next, we've got Rodney Green, Roger Sosa, then Ray Friedman. So welcome, Rod.
Hi, Mayor. I'm still working with Rodney Green and getting him connected, and I'm not sure if Roger Sosa is on the call yet.
Okay, so, all right, so we'll come back to Rodney if you get him connected. Roger Sosa, are you on the call? We don't hear you if you are, Roger. All right, well, we'll come back to Roger later and see if he's here. Ray Friedman, then Leslie Shad, then Tina Payden. Welcome, Ray. You're on, Ray.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hagerty, and everybody on the council. I'd like to start out my comments tonight by saying thank you to all of you who have reached out to us, the residents, to keep us informed with emails, social media, and virtual award meetings. We've all been very concerned with this pandemic, and even more concerning is the lack of leadership and clarity and the confusion from the president on down. We all need to be on the same page and moving in the same direction to fight this pandemic. As you had said, Mayor Hagerty, I also was reading an article yesterday in USA Today which talked about the 1918 Spanish Flu, which seems very similar to coronavirus. It states that 100 years ago, Philadelphia chose a parade over social distancing and paid a heavy price. And as World War I was ending, the Spanish Flu killed 50 million people worldwide and 675,000 in the U.S. alone. That's crazy. Now, yesterday I was reading in MSN News that 24 states still have uncontrolled coronavirus outbreaks. Texas is number one, while Arizona is two, Illinois is number three in the U.S. with 108,000 cases and 4,790 deaths. I do know that some senior citizens, facilities, and nursing homes are testing every resident and all staff for coronavirus. I was wondering if we're doing that here in Evanston. And apparently, the first course of action needs to be testing, and then following the advice from the medical professionals, our mayor, City Chicago Mayor, and our governor. We, we're all looking for, I don't know why we're looking for a new city hall at this time, and why we're spending all this money to fix up the existing building for a temporary civic center. We just spent $54 million on a new building. We could use the second floor of the Robert Crown Center for temporary housing, or temporary offices, sorry, our temporary housing also. Doesn't Northwestern have a bunch of empty office space that we can use? But again, why are we moving out of the city hall at 2100? And talking about empty space, what is the status of 1305 Pittner? We've been talking about this building for over three years now. The taxpayers have $5.5 million invested in this building and program. that does not yet have a valid zoning approval. It was finished about a year ago and is advertising those rental units for a program that it was not approved for. Is this how we're doing business here in Evanston now? We seriously need to have a dialogue with all interested Evanstonians so that we might have a meeting of the minds, and we can all be moving in the same direction. And we really need to know where our money is going and why. With over 800 employees and almost $6 million a month in payroll and almost $6 million a month in expenses, plus credit cards, then more credit cards, something has to give. We would think that during this pandemic, I just have three more sentences, please, that during the pandemic and stay-at-home orders, that payroll and expenses have gone down significantly, which would offset most of the increased Corona expenses. And you just raised taxes by 10.9%. So please, no new taxes, no new loans, no new bonds, no new fees. And we have a budget of $320 million. Why can't we work within this budget? Since I've been here for four years, we've had a budget crisis every single year. Okay, and now we're facing another one. How do we fix this ongoing issue? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. In terms of the, just for people that are watching, in terms of senior living centers and the nursing home facilities, IDPH and Evanston Public Health is working hand in hand with them. They are a member of the mayor's task force. And so they're getting testing when they need testing, and it's help that additional testing has come online, particularly for the nursing homes or the independent senior living. IDPH and those senior living centers are still working together on that. How about Leslie Shad? We've got Leslie Shad, then Tina Payden, and David Lipshutz. Are you on, Leslie? We see, I see, there you are.
So yes, I'm Leslie Shad. I represent Natural Habitat Evanston, about 470 people. I've submitted my comments, and I know each of you cares about trees and about everyone having access to trees. So I just have a few comments. I know that you're considering a different vaccination idea, and it would be great if the city could fully manage the program. I understand it is more manageable. I just want to caution that the vaccine alternative appears to boost the level of resistance of trees. But if trees are already compromised, it may not work as well. And I want to call out the University of Wisconsin study that said that even though the level of protection from Dutch elm disease improves with the Dutch Trig, the question remaining at this point in time is whether the increased level of protection is sufficient to effectively protect elms from Dutch elm disease infections in the field. So I am concerned about that. The current fungicide treatment works well, and I hope you'll fully fund the existing program. And then, during that time, explore options. I realize you're in a bad budget situation, though. So Citizens Greener Evanston with the Evanston Community Foundation is working to set up a fund. We've already received a pledge of support. And we hope that the fund will support trees when the city cannot and help address equity issues with trees. There already are, despite the Dutch elm program being handled very equitably, there are equity issues with trees because people get in line and can pay to step up their place in lines. So perhaps the fund can also help with that. But I don't want to project that the fund could fill a budget gap or sustain the whole elm program. The city will still need to decide which programs it funds and how it staffs its work. I would hope that it would be from an overview across city departments determining what can be postponed or canceled. Obviously, this elm treatment is a high-budget item because it's three years of treatment rolled into one year. If the trees could be treated every year in rolling stages, instead of all at once, the budget hit could be spread over three years. I know these are incredibly hard decisions, and I thank each of you for all your work for us and Evanston. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Next up, we've got Tina Payden, then David Lipshutz, and then Judith Treadway.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Payden. I would like to talk about steering today. Steering is the illegal practice of showing or guiding prospective clients to properties in certain areas while avoiding to show them properties in other areas that they may be qualified for or interested in. Steering is considered discriminatory in nature. Steering should not be practiced by anyone. This includes real estate brokers, landlords, city officials, or agency employees. Persons practicing this illegal act should be fined and prosecuted. The city of Evanston should make sure that its residents are afforded fair and equitable housing. On that note, Payden Properties has affordable one to two, four-bedroom units available for people that will be on a program through one of the local agencies or the city of Evanston. The government money that is coming into Evanston for the various programs should be made public, the amount of money for each program, and which agencies are getting the money. Families should not be sent out of Evanston with this money. Thank you, and I look forward to the calls from the people looking for an apartment for affordable units. Everyone be safe and take care.
Thank you, Tina. David Lipshutz, Judith Treadway, then Priscilla Giles. Are you on, David?
Hi, Mayor. I'm not sure if David's on. Yeah, I'm not sure about Judith either.
Okay, what about, did Rodney Green or Roger Sosa come live?
Yes, Rodney is on now.
All right, let's go to Rodney Green. Welcome, Rodney.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, the clerk, council member, and interim city manager. Good to hear your voices. I just want to comment on SP4. And I know that Governor Pritzker said that he moved it up a whole month earlier to open up restaurants. Now, I sympathize and empathize with the restaurant owners. We all have been affected by this pandemic episode in life. Everything has changed, but I'm hoping that the council will vote not to approve.
I guess I'm muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Rodney. We need someone with the number 6870 to mute.
Hello?
Could you mute right now? 6870, thank you. All right, Rodney, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm hoping that the council will not vote to approve this item, SP4. And the reason I'm saying this is because that we still haven't seen a decrease or leveling out of the coronavirus pandemic. I believe that we're moving a little too hastily to reopen the establishments. We, I think, will be placing the public's health and safety at risk. We'll, we still do not know how many are affected or how many are the carriers of this disease. And to allow residents and businesses to be seated outside poses a health problem. I'm pretty sure that none of the patrons will be eating with their masks on or even sitting as they wait for their food to be served. Looking at the Cook County cases, there have been 63,690 confirmed cases, recovered 247, and deaths 2,889. Now, this virus also has hit Evanston as well. And the last updated record was at 3:00 PM on the 25th of May, just yesterday. It confirmed 666 deaths, I mean confirmed cases and 30 deaths. But we do not know of any one who has recovered from this virus in Evanston yet. We don't know if they died or if they, they just left them off the list, but there's no record of the recoveries. I know that on the 23rd of April, the city had put in force a mandatory wearing of face garments, whether cloth or whatever it was. Now, if this suggestion by the council is mandated, will it then become null and void and once the restaurants are reopened? Will this type of gathering initiate another episode or increase the number of potential infectious residents? Again, I'm asking the council to vote no to SP4 just because we have not gone through enough to see a decrease. We have not gone through enough to identify those who are infected. And being even in groups of 10 or having social spread out, I find a lot of the residents here do not wear masks or anything. So I do believe that it's going to put this community in a hazardous form. We are supplying, we are taking or take out from the restaurants and all. I think it should stay that way until we're certainly sure that the level has gone down. And I don't think that has done it yet.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Okay, have a great evening.
We're waiting. Thank you, Rodney. Appreciate it. Next up, Luke, did any of the others that we were asking for come online?
Yeah, David's ready now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. David Lipshutz is next. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm speaking this evening in support of reopening outdoor dining. My name is David Lipshutz. I'm an Evanston resident, attended THS, and I've owned and operated the Blind Faith Cafe on Dumpster Street for 40 years. First, I want to, as others, express my gratitude on behalf of the business community and the restaurant community for the support and leadership the city has shown during this extraordinary time. It really is deeply appreciated. I guess I want to remind everyone that restaurants are certainly in the hospitality industry, but we're also in the public health business. We take public health seriously. We're trained to protect it, and we recognize that the public health is critical to our success. And we also know that there's a balance between protecting public health and the pursuit of commerce. Having said that, you know, the restaurant community is really in a difficult, dangerous financial state. And despite all the federal programs that have been put in place, there are a few industries that have been hit quite as hard as restaurants have. And I think we all know that it's going to be some time before restaurants are operating anything close to pre-COVID levels. And besides that, besides feeding the community, restaurants obviously generate jobs and much-needed tax revenue. So I want to encourage the council tonight to make every effort to make it possible to allow restaurants to begin outdoor service as quickly as possible, certainly within the guidelines laid out by IDPH, which I read and I think are completely appropriate. I'm sure there will be discussion tonight about creative ways to make outdoor dining feasible for as many restaurants as possible. And I support that. I do. But I want to ask that you give special consideration this evening to restaurants that already have a valid sidewalk cafe license and a proven track record of operating responsibly so we're not penalized as the discussion goes forward, and we can be given permission to begin operating outdoor table service this weekend. I assume that sidewalk clearance will be a subject of discussion, as it should be, as it relates to the ongoing standard for sidewalk cafes and social distancing. But I want to remind the council that the city already requires six feet of passable sidewalk for outdoor cafes. And they tell us that the transmission of COVID is conditional on the time of exposure, your intensity, and the proximity to it. I would argue that passing a sidewalk cafe, presumably with a mask on as one strolls down the street, is really no different than passing another pedestrian walking towards you in terms of the time, the intensity, and the proximity of that exposure. And I believe, therefore, that the existing standard of six feet of passable sidewalk from a table is more than ample and suitable to protect public health and allow restaurants to operate safely outdoors. And I believe adheres to the IDPH guidelines. And I guess finally, I want to offer my perspective on the idea of closing streets and parking lanes to accommodate outdoor seating. And I think there's merit in those considerations. I think every business district in the city is unique. But I want to also remind everyone that delivery and carryout accounts for all the revenue restaurants have right now. And it will continue to be the vast majority of revenue, even if sidewalk cafes are opened. Limiting parking in proximity to restaurants has the potential to negatively impact carryout, delivery, and curbside pickup, which restaurants are really dependent upon. So I just want to add that to the mix. I don't have an answer for it, but I think it's important that it be considered as you go forward. So as you discuss the plan tonight, please, I encourage you to allow restaurants with valid cafe licenses and approved site plans that require six feet of passable sidewalk space to be allowed to operate for service within the IDPH guidelines this weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David, for those thoughtful comments. Do we have Judith Treadway with us? Okay, how about, next we'll go to Mike Vasilko, and then we've got Joshua Bowes Carlson. He's our last speaker.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. I have to agree with Rodney Green and what he just said about people in Evanston not wearing face masks. I mean, I wear mine as soon as I walk outside, walk the dog or anything else. But there are a huge percentage of people who aren't doing it, for whatever reason, in our neighborhood and around town. So just be real cautious about the fact that, you know, opening restaurants, especially in the sidewalk, that seems like an issue to me. I want to circle back, though, to what I think keeps being under-discussed, which is this issue of the elder care facilities or assisted living facilities. If we're reporting accurately, and there's only, I mean, only 30 deaths is enough deaths, of course, in Evanston. But if the number is 30, and of that number, it's been reported that 23 of those deaths are in senior care facilities, then it seems to me we have a huge problem with our senior care facilities, especially the Grove of Evanston, which reports eight deaths, and Three Crowns, which reported six deaths. And that's the majority of the others having one or two, which is one or two too many, of course. But I haven't heard anything discussed about what Evanston is doing to intervene. I heard the firemen speak, and God bless them for taking on that task. But something else is missing in the formula. If our percentage of deaths in senior care is nearly 80% compared to the state, which the average is almost 50%, and nationally, only 43% of deaths in nursing care facilities compared to the total number of deaths from coronavirus. So there's something out of whack, or there's something terribly wrong with nursing care facilities in Evanston, especially those two. That's one comment. Second comment is, why are we spending $5,000 on the Howard Street Theater? Again, this thing and the credit card spending $1,000 here, $1,000 there, $2,000 on another. It all adds up to $5,000, and it's all about security cameras. I'd like to know why that's happening. I'd like more explanation about the shortfall in the total fund, general fund revenue that's projected loss of $10.6 million. I don't know how that number came about, what's in it, what's not in it. And last but not least, I saw a story today, friends of Robert Crown transferring $637,000 to the city. Where's the other $10 million that they still owe Evanston for their commitment of $17.5 million towards the construction cost of that building? Have not seen or heard anything about that. This $637,000 is way overdue, certainly not $10 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And our last speaker tonight is Joshua Bowes Carlson. Welcome, Joshua.
Hi, I'm from the 3rd Ward, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Southeast Evanston Association. Association. Um, we want to thank the members of the City Council for putting considerable energy into navigating the budget cuts needed to alleviate our revenue shortfall. We very much appreciate the impossible task of choosing which items need to be adjusted in order to maintain sustainable operation of government. However, we don't agree with last week's decision to cut the Dutch Elm disease mitigation program by half as it's not in the best interests of the economics of the city. The trees you've chosen to put at risk are of essential value to residents, property owners, and the business community. It's not hyperbolic to say that their loss would be one that would be felt for generations. Uh, according to the Chicago Region Trees Initiative, tree-lined business districts lead to demonstrably more frequent and longer shopping trips, increased shoppers' willingness to pay for more more goods. In all, in all times, but especially now, we need to incentivize the patronage of local businesses and tax revenue that comes from their success. Uh, we argue that Evanston's treescape is essential to maintaining the quality of life and atmosphere that propels and maintains commercial as well as residential property values. Again, a source of tax revenue for our community deeply needed more now more than ever to fund the kinds of programs that we've talked from a human point of view. In addition to the long-term economics, the near-term fiscal impacts due to the high cost of, um, cutting down the dead Elms will result, uh, uh, that will result significantly nullifies the budget efficacy of this cut. Um, since the May eleventh decision by the City Council to cut the program, the Southeast Evanston Association has worked with many of the folks that you've heard speak out tonight, um, increasing public awareness and working to, uh, initiate grassroots fundraising to help fill the budget gap. Unfortunately, with the June first deadline, it's, as has already been said, it's surely not enough time for us to fill this budget gap. Um, in the near term, the only remedy we can see is for the City, the council to devote further energy into budget and logistical options that would allow for Elms to be adequately cared for. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Joshua. Uh, and we actually do have one more. I'm sorry, uh, Luke notified me. Uh, Pat Fowler will be our last speaker tonight. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, members of council. Thanks for your time. Um, here to speak tonight on, uh, two items for, uh, restaurants here in Evanston. Uh, the first thing I wanted to bring up was, um, uh, council had passed a few weeks ago a delivery commission cap, uh, for third-party service providers. Uh, that cap is set to expire, uh, coming up. I believe it was aligned with the, uh, mayor's emergency order, and, uh, I'm here asking you tonight to extend, uh, the commission cap. Um, my suggestion would be to align it with the, uh, State of Illinois reopening guidelines, so to, uh, extend that cap, um, to go, uh, beyond, uh, the date that it's set for now. Um, and then additionally, also encouraging you to allow, uh, restaurants to operate, uh, outdoor dining, either via sidewalk cafe or patio. Um, we've all been, uh, provided lots of guidance from, uh, Illinois Department of Public Health on how to operate those, uh, types of dining safely. Uh, and I think, um, allowing restaurants to do this would be, uh, really impactful to the, uh, owners and also, uh, to our employees. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, council members.
Thank, thank, thank you, Pat, and thanks for your leadership along with all many of the other restaurateurs and and working through this tough time. Uh, that concludes, unless we have Roger Sosa, Priscilla Giles, or Judith Tredway, which I don't think we do. Uh, that concludes, uh, public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking on a variety of topics. Uh, we're now going to move into the, um, agenda. The first item's up this week or today is, uh, the special orders of business. We have several, uh, special orders of business. So, um, I'm going to ask, uh, if, um, Alderman Wilson, can you just move, um, SP one?
Sure. Um, SP one, staff is recommending that the City Council review the update to the 2020 budget. This is a discussion item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, all right, uh, interim manager Storey, could you, uh, begin to lead us in this conversation on SP one?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have had, uh, another few weeks since our last update to continue working on how we're going to mitigate the damage to our budget, uh, from this pandemic and how we're going to, uh, close the gap on what is currently a shortfall between our anticipated revenues and our anticipated expenses. So, uh, the budget team has been hard at work with, um, all the, working with all the city staff, trying to figure out additional ways in which we can move forward, um, while both reducing expenses and figuring out other ways, uh, to shore up our revenues. So I'm going to hand it over to Hitesh and Kate at this point in time to start the presentation, and then I'll jump in for a couple of anecdotes. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Hit us this, I'm your financial officer. So, I mean, Kate, can you please bring up the presentation for the, okay, and let's move on to the next screen, please? So we have these four major items. Obviously, the revenue projections, what's the impact? Uh, second thing is the COVID nineteen response expenses. Uh, the third budget balancing process, what we are doing, and the last one is equity assessment. So on the revenue projections, we are still kind of keeping an eye, uh, okay, how the trends is, but still kind of it's based on the estimates as most of the agencies have extended deadline. On the second item, which is COVID nineteen response expenses, um, Kate Lewis is doing a great job of tracking it, and even thanks to the mayor to kind of lend his expertise on the filing side, so we are kind of ready to file the kind of what we call expedited filing where we can get fifty percent of the seventy-five percent eligible. So that's going on, um, and budget balancing process, which includes the furlough days. Employees already took a couple of furlough days, ongoing discussions with the unions to kind of match their contribution with the non-union employees, um, hiring freeze, some of those, even we see that the Friends of Robert Crown, they are going to contribute some money, uh, for the additional debt service for the Crown. And one of the other thing is the restructuring of some of the contracts and services, uh, which would result in kind of substantial savings, the in general fund or the other fund. And the last one is the equity assessment process, which Kimberly Richardson, the Assistant City Manager, leading it. And that's an ongoing process, and she would update the council at a future day with more details. Let's move on to the next screen, please, Kate. So the revenue projections, I mean, we are keeping an eye on all the communication from various agencies like IML, Illinois Municipal League, IDO, Department of Revenue, our Finance Officers Association and other, and we are still kind of there. And one of the reason is that this is most of the revenue that, as I mentioned earlier, based on the estimates because March returns like sales tax, use tax, telecommunications tax, big revenues, uh, they are still estimated. They would come either May end or June. Uh, in some of the home rule taxes, um, we had extended the deadline by sixty days. So obviously, some of them haven't filed the returns or filed the return with no money. So I think we would have a better picture, at least, mm, based on the actual March numbers in the next hour, June meeting. Um, and again, we mentioned staff continue to monitor reopening as they, yeah, we see that there's more and more businesses are reopening, so that might help us solve the revenues. So we will kind of continue to, yeah, monitor those, uh, trend. Next one, please. This is the, yeah, I mean, we presented this general fund balance by each month, and you see in the red, that's the kind of worst-case scenario where we say that, okay, if we lost ten point six million dollars in the revenue. Next one is, okay, revenue projections. And again, this is broader property taxes. I mean, Cook County has kind of, uh, going to waive the, uh, what do you call it? The penalties or interest for the late payment by sixty days. So they are not technically extending the deadline, but if you pay after the August first, they would still waive the penalty of interest. Sales tax, as I mentioned, the data is not still known. Use tax, again, same thing on the three, and income tax. Um, April twenty twenty activity, yeah, we got fifty percent of the revenue of last year, twenty nineteen, April. But again, IRS and Department of Revenue here, they have extended that filing deadline. So obviously, the money coming from the, uh, big corporations as well as the individuals. So we won't have true number after the kind of the July fifteen deadline. Uh, next, please, Kate. Revenue projections and the, our home rule taxes. We mentioned last time to recreation programs, we have, we have substantial loss there because of the so many cancellations, whether it's the programs, classes, and all those kinds and the parking tickets. Uh, that's the big loss too, obviously. Um, some of those other things, hotel tax, liquor tax, motorfield tax, and in the last April's memo, we kind of listed top fifteen or twenty revenues, uh, how we come up with that ten point six million dollar estimated revenue impact. Next, please, Kate. Cash and investment. So, I mean, I know people just like are worried about what's the situation of the city of Evanston cash. So we still kind of, uh, as of last week, um, in real total cash excluding library pension around sixty million dollar. I have mentioned some of the major funds, general fund, water, sewer, averaging around seven to eight million dollar. We have this credit line approved by Byline, and they are in the process of executing the document. So we could have potentially the document later this week and the money available in week to ten days. So we have kept that fifteen million, um, so in case of the worst scenario. So the way the things are going, at least on the economy, the more businesses are reopening and the other establishment, um, I don't know. But again, I'll keep the finger crossed, and we will keep this thing available, uh, in case we need the cash. And last one is again, yes, I mean, I look at the all other options, particularly which is grant, um, so we don't have to repay that, whether it's a federal level, whether it's an estate county pass-through and other liquidity options. I mean, again, this was considering the worst-case scenario, uh, but we continue to kind of, yeah, keep in our back mind that, okay, in case the things go worse, uh, we have to have cash, uh, to pay, uh, for the payroll and the bills list. Uh, next is COVID nineteen response costs. Okay, Kate, can you please just kind of cover these things?
Yep. So, uh, the city's been tracking, uh, COVID nineteen response costs, uh, since we began our response in mid-March. Uh, currently, we're projecting, uh, expenses of one point nine, one point five million through the end of June. Uh, this is an increased projection from the last presentation we get gave specifically due to, uh, expansion of the non-congruent housing program through the end of May, um, and and the growth of expenses along with that. Uh, March eleventh, council approved moving the housing funding from the general fund to the affordable housing fund. Uh, and that's, uh, they're really helpful in ensuring, uh, their general fund cash is in a good place, and we continue to support the expenses, uh, in the short term. In the long term, we will still be using, we will still be applying for FEMA public assistance for these funds, whether or not they are paid out of the general fund or the affordable housing fund. So right now, we are prepared, uh, to submit a, uh, application for expedited funding from, to cover the ninety-day period from March thirteen through June twelve. We hope that this covers a large chunk of these expenses, um, and most of that one point five million that that we stated above. Uh, if this is approved for the expedited funding, we would receive fifty percent of the eligible funding upfront, uh, and then the remaining funding after all of our final cost documentation is submitted. Uh, and the total eligible funding that we would expect to receive on these expenses is seventy-five percent of the total, uh, with the other twenty-five percent being a city or non-federal match. Um, and we are, you know, working diligently to make sure that we're fitting together the puzzle of all these different pieces of federal aid, um, and making sure that we can get as much coverage as possible, um, from all of the different grant programs available at the federal and state level to support these response costs. I'm going to move into, uh, discussing our budget balancing items. This is, uh, a recap on the slide of some of the items that we discussed at the end of April, and then we'll go into, uh, some of the changes that have been made, um, since that presentation. Actually, I'm sorry, the slide mostly covers the changes that have been made since April twenty-seventh presentation. Uh, so since that presentation, we've enacted ten furlough days for our non-union employees. This included a, uh, city closure day on May eighteenth that just passed a week ago. Um, that was an unpaid day for, uh, non-union employees as well as ASME employees. Uh, the non-union employees have also taken, uh, four unpaid holidays. Uh, one was just yesterday for Memorial Day, and then three more upcoming on July third, Labor Day, and Thanksgiving Day. And then, uh, non-union employees will be expected to take five additional unpaid furlough days, uh, at the employee's discretion from now until until the end of the year. The ASME union, uh, agreed on the May eighteenth furlough day, and again, that was an unpaid day for ASME employees as well. Tentative agreement on nine additional furlough days, um, and to be determined whether those are, again, a combination of unpaid holidays or dates at the employee's discretion. Uh, the dialogue continues with the FOP and IAFF, uh, which are our police and fire unions regarding, uh, taking on ten furlough days or the equivalent number. Our public safety employees are on typically slightly different schedules than than our office and other workers that are on more of a standard eight thirty to five o'clock. So ten furlough days looks a little bit different, especially for our twenty-four-hour firefighter employees. Uh, if if it was sort of the same equivalent number of days, uh, together, those would result in the savings of an additional nine hundred thousand dollars. And then again, of course, the discussion on the Dutch Elm tree inoculation, the changes made at the last City Council meeting have given us the savings of four hundred thousand dollars. So this is again, a chart pulling all of this together, both those that were in place uh, at the April twenty-seventh meeting as well as those new items that have come in. Uh, you can see that we've also enacted, uh, some layoffs. Those took place, uh, in late March, early April, so those were in place at the last meeting. Um, again, we've had a hiring freeze since mid-March when this crisis began. That's actually yielded quite a number of vacancies, and if we project holding those out through the end of the year, that gives us two million dollars in savings. Um, and again, some good room to work, uh, on rearranging and taking a look at our services around those vacancies, um, to hopefully help us out going forward, uh, into future years as well. Uh, the agreed-upon non-union furlough days, uh, ASME furloughs, the set furlough that took place on May eighteenth, and then, uh, the nine additional furlough days just split out there since those days are tentative at this point. Uh, and then we do have also enacted a furlough of our parts and rec instructors. Uh, so these are folks who are working, uh, part-time in our buildings doing programs. Uh, so those folks have unfortunately been furloughed at this point, um, would expect to come back online when those programs could be happening again in our buildings. This is a continuation, sort of adding on a few more. Again, Dutch Elm inoculation, as discussed at the last council meeting, savings on our crossing guard contract as schools have been closed. Uh, we have not been having crossing guard that guards out, so that's been a savings. Um, other department expense cuts, this is four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. This is anything from training and travel, some seasonal employees reductions in contracts. So this, this is the number that's come out of, uh, meeting with every department and just asking departments to hold off on non-essential spending and really scrub some of those lines that they hope, uh, that they could expect to not spend through the end of the year. Uh, adding in the six hundred thousand debt debt service contribution from Friends of Crown, that's supporting our increase in debt service, uh, that took place from, uh, our twenty nineteen budget going into twenty twenty. So that will be a benefit to the general fund as a result. And then looking at our inter-fund transfers, uh, mostly to the insurance fund, the equipment replacement fund, um, just being able to to more fully use some of the cash and some of those other funds, um, to support our general fund this year. We put that all together, we found about seven million dollars in solutions so far that have been enacted. We adopted a budget, uh, City Council adopted a budget with one point six million dollars in surplus, and when we put that against the ten point six million, uh, projected revenue loss, we're ending up with a with a net deficit of two million dollars in the general fund. Um, because our city budget is actually not just the general fund, uh, that's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of our three hundred, a hundred and fifteen million of our, uh, three hundred and twenty million dollar total budget, uh, we have to look at other funds as well. So, uh, in the parking fund, as we discussed last meeting, our SP plus contract has been renegotiated to create savings. Some of our non-union layoffs have hit, um, in the other funds as well. These positions were typically split between a couple of funds. Um, so we'll be looking at that as well as our hiring freeze and current vacancies and other funds to see, uh, if there is any reorganization available where, again, we can more fully use these other funds in the budget to support the general fund. Uh, and then tentative on the ASME agreement, uh, the library fund would also see, uh, ten furlough days to their employees as well, and that would be a savings to that fund. And then finally, we are continuing to work on our equity and budget process. This is being led by Kimberly Richardson, our assistant city manager, and she will hopefully discuss that at a at a future city council meeting. I think we're looking into June on that. Just giving a more overview look to our budget, to our services from that really service level focus of what are the services that are needed most right now? And how do we make sure that we, as the city, are putting our resources there and providing those services in this new post-COVID nineteen environment? And make sure that we are able to shift and change what we do to to follow what the community needs at this time. So we'll we'll be having further discussions along those lines as well. And that wraps me up. I did not, Erica did not jump in at all when I thought she might, but maybe that's because I didn't give her enough chance. So Erica, is there anything you'd like to to go back to or follow up on this presentation?
No, that was extremely well done, so thank you very much for that presentation. I'm just going to add a few anecdotes, which is, you know, very much appreciate Friends of Crown stepping up and being able to provide that six hundred and forty thousand dollars that will cover the increase in the debt service from what we built into last year's budget to this year's budget. So that's going to be a big help. And then I'm very encouraged by the progress that's being made with the unions. ASME is is a tentative agreement. And so I'm I'm very confident that we'll get to a final agreement very soon with the ASME union. And that willingness to come forward and help out when it's needed is truly appreciated. And I know that the fire and police unions are also looking very hard at what potentially they could do as far as helping contribute to solving this this deficit. I do again caution that, you know, ten point six million was our floor of potential revenue loss and not our ceiling. It could go higher if if things don't get back to some level of new normal soon, which includes a level of safety and comfort that we don't yet have with people being able to patronize businesses and go go about and congregate like we used to. So we're going to see some long-term impacts of this until we have either a treatment or a vaccine. And we have neither of those right now. So we are making progress, but that progress, you know, is not definite because we don't yet know what our final number is going to be. So we'll continue to look at the trends. And once we have more of that data that is coming in at a delayed rate because of the postponements of those due dates, which is good for businesses, but a little more difficult for us to project because we're not getting the data. Once we get some more concrete data, we'll be able to do some more accurate projections as far as how we're getting back on track and what the next six months looks like for us to get through the rest of this year. So, you know, we haven't come to you tonight with the total puzzle solved, but we're making good progress and we're going to need to make some more tough decisions down the road. But what we've done so far has really helped. And I appreciate the willingness of all of our employees to not only step forward in the time of crisis and do their jobs with professionalism and with enthusiasm, despite all the stresses that they have going on in their their own lives, but also being willing to participate in the overall solution to our budget challenge. So that's definitely something that we never want to have to ask of our employees. But when we ask it and they respond, I always appreciate it so much. With that, I don't have anything else to add to the presentation. So we're happy to answer any questions about where we are and where we're headed.
Thank you, Erica, and thank you, Kesh and Kate for that overview. So let me start off with a question. Kesh had the graph of the three scenarios. I don't know if you can put that put that graph up. But my my question is, that was a while back. You had the three different scenarios. Do you have any actual, like, if you had to draw an actual line there, where is that actually following right now? And this again, is our general fund, you know, balance, just for people that are watching, this is critical. This is the cash that we have available to us.
Yes, I asked that question myself, if we had actuals yet for March or April. And because of that delay, we don't yet have actuals for those two months. I wanted to plot them on this chart so that we could see, you know, how we were tracking as to how we projected. But we don't have it yet, but we should have it for the June meeting. We will be doing a budget update every month on the second meeting of the month for the foreseeable future indefinitely until we we get to a better place. So we should have that information for the June meeting, but we don't yet have it. So we're in a okay position as far as cash is concerned. You know, greatly alleviated by the fact that we did approve the line of credit at the meeting earlier in May or April. So we have that, we have not had to use it yet, which is great. We don't anticipate using it for a few more months if if it's needed. But it's it's a good relief to know that we have it. But if we can avoid using it, of course, we would like to avoid using it.
Managing our cash is going to be key. These companies that go bankrupt and everything else, it's not because they don't have a strong, you know, P and L, it's because they ran out of cash.
Exactly.
So the same thing can happen to cities. So it's just imperative that we stay on top of our cash. Just for folks that are watching from home, all these numbers and everything that we're talking about is on an annual basis. The way the city budgets, it's from January first to December thirty first. And I just mentioned that because some folks have fiscal years that are ending on June thirtieth. That is not the case with the city of Evanston. All right, let's open it up to other questions or comments from our council. If I could just see the council on my screen, if we can take down the presentation. All right, and there are other questions or comments from Alderman? Alderman, run.
Yes. I have two questions, Erica. Are our part-time staff, I know we don't have a ton of them, but are they also taking the ten furlough days?
Right now, we're in discussions with ASME that part-time employees would take five furlough days instead of ten so that it was more equitable to their total amount of hours worked per week.
And our non-union staff, are they taking, the part-time staff are taking five days?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And then I know you said that progress is being made, but do you have any kind of timeline on the police and fire negotiations?
I'm hoping to have some concrete idea before the end of June. Time is of the essence here. And if there is, you know, furloughs or other concessions to be made by those employee groups, it's certainly less painful to them if they have a longer lead time to spread it out over. And I think that that is understood on both sides. But it is a negotiation process and we're we're doing the best we can to make it move at a pace that both sides can work with.
And ASME, I'm assuming, is a little bit faster because it's already tentative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Erica, so I appreciate that the fire and the police unions understand the gravity of the situation that we are in. But at the end of the day, if they come back and say, listen, we can't give you any, you know, concessions in terms of furloughs or anything like that, you know, what power then do you have as the interim city manager to just make decisions that are going to affect their workforce?
I mean, obviously, that is a possibility. It's it's a possibility that we hope to avoid, but if it's if it's not.
I agree, I would like to avoid that. I don't think anybody wants that situation. But I also, you know, time is sort of of the essence here. And this is only potentially going to get worse, not likely better. And we need to look quickly.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to make any, any, you know, broad statements or threats, but we have to. If we don't get those concessions, then the money has to come from somewhere. And that likely, you know, we've already pretty much tapped and went through every possible scenario for saving expenses on non-personnel. So the only thing left is personnel. And, you know, that will that will cause us to make some tough decisions about about the staffing and the services that we provide. So I'm hopeful that we'll come to an agreement. But if we don't, then we'll have to take a close look at at what we do and how we do it and make some tough decisions.
All right, any other comments, questions on the budget? All right, thank you, thank you, everybody, and thank you to your staff. Then we're going to move to SP two. Alderman, Marie Simmons, could you introduce SP two for discussion?
You can hear me okay?
We can hear you.
SP two, civic center planning discussion. At the city council meeting on May eleventh, twenty twenty, city council directed staff to provide information related to potential relocating a temporary civic center in downtown Evanston and what the process would be for selling the existing twenty-one hundred Ridge Avenue property. Staff is providing this information for discussion and request direction from city council on how to proceed. And this is for discussion.
Thank you, there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. All right, Erica, I'm going to turn it over to you then to begin this discussion on the civic center.
Thank you, yes. So as we discussed at the last meeting, there's been a lot of capital improvements to this, to the civic center that have been delayed over time. And we're at the useful, end of the useful life of a lot of the mechanicals. And that's brought about some, you know, heightened level of insecurity, especially with the pandemic and how our HVAC is operating and ventilation and things in the civic center not being as, you know, desirable as we'd like them to be. So that evolved into a conversation that's been ongoing for a long time now about what's the future of the civic center? And, you know, would it be prudent at this point in time for us to evaluate options in the downtown? Because the downtown businesses are in a state of distress and would greatly benefit from an increased amount of foot traffic that could be provided if we were to locate a temporary civic center in the downtown with our own employees patronizing those businesses as well as the residents and others who come to visit us at at the civic center, also potentially patronizing those downtown businesses to help aid in the recovery. So staff's put together this memo outlining options that we evaluated. The Evanston Public Library was one of those options. It is identified as a very good option because there's some underutilized space available. And it also has, you know, access to parking and other services. But there's also other options that we could evaluate for other office space in the downtown. So we welcome your feedback and look forward to your direction.
Thank you, Erica. So I'm going to open it up now for a conversation. Let's go with Alderman Wilson first and then Alderman.
Thank you. So I am interested in finding out more about what the library option would look like. And I saw the memo indicates that the next step would to be engaging in conversations with the library board. So I'm interested in seeing that. Obviously, it's not particularly, I realize with the capital expenditures, renting space might be savings opportunity, but at the same time, we already own the library building. So that's that's the one I'm most interested in looking at and seeing what that looks like. So, you know, we're not voting tonight, we're not having a decision on anything, but I think it's prudent to know what our options are. I know that people will be upset by even having this conversation, but we're supposed to have conversations. That's what we're likely to do and we're supposed to come up with the best solution. So I would be interested in seeing what this library option looks like with some more detail and with the library board's input.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I agree with that. And, you know, personally, I think it was probably a mistake years ago for the city to have moved the civic center out of downtown. Beautiful Steven Jennings Building that was on the corner of Davis and and Sherman. Because civic centers provide a definite public benefit to the downtown. And and that is something that the city manager storely has referred to. And and I absolutely agree with that. Anything that we can do to be forward-thinking in terms of support for our central business district, we'll just have benefits throughout Evanston clearly, clearly. We we made the decision to acquire the civic center, it was for a song. And and it seemed like a good idea at the time. And I don't think we ever anticipated that we would have the kinds of maintenance costs that we have now in relationship to the building. But the building, for so many different reasons, just doesn't work. And I think the consultant's report about how many square feet are per employee in the building and the cost of the repairs simply doesn't make sense for us right now. Couple that with the fact that the city councils that certainly preceded our, our, except for Alderman Rainey probably, preceded our tenure here, have talked about the need to be thinking about an alternate site. This is not just us. This is, this is city managers going back for a number of decades that have been looking at this, probably from the beginning, saying, this is not a permanent home. This was not built as a civic center, it was built as a girl's school. Now, that said, it's a beautiful property. And the last city council meeting, I said that it was my hope that should we decide to to vacate the building and develop the property, that we look at affordable housing on the site. I think the building could work for that. And and maintaining the park is obviously important. But I think there's there's some things that are, would be valuable to have further discussion about. And I'd like our staff to kind of think creatively about, along with with us and especially the ward alderman, about what might be a good use. So I'm, I I want to do some more talking about this. Also, if we did relocate to the library, I think there's sufficient room in the library. That would also mean that we would have access to the library parking lot to serve the civic uses within the library. The building of the new library at Robert Crown, I think, has helped distribute the wealth of the library throughout the city in a very positive way and made made it possible to consolidate the activities in the main library to provide us with the space that we need. So those are my thoughts up to the moment. And I'm interested in hearing what everyone else thinks.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman, win, then Alderman, your sentence.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I am very interested in having us explore this. I think it's really important. It's something that we did look at. I actually was also on that council, Alderman Fisk, when we thought very, very seriously about it and did a use study. And even at that point in time, we learned that the civic center was much larger than we needed and something that was self-evident. So I I think that here we are about ten years later and the way people office is very different now. And we're discovering during coronavirus that people can work remotely very efficiently. Sometimes I don't, you know, I think everyone misses the ability to to and the value of being in one location. But I think this is something that's long overdue. And I'm very interested in exploring the library space. I think it's remarkable to discover that we have a lot of unused space there that we can use. I agree, getting city employees downtown has always been an added plus, you know, particularly useful. It it never has made sense to me that the civic center, when I first moved here years ago, it was like, what is the civic center doing there? You know, when we have the police and fire headquarters right downtown. So I I'm very curious to learn more about this. I I think you, finding this empty space in the library is very, is very good because it is a building we own. I like the idea of having a storefront where, right on the street, that people can use and access easily. So I I definitely am interested in in moving forward with this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, your sentence.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. For all the reasons mentioned, I'm really encouraged by the opportunity to move downtown specifically for the public benefit and very encouraged to see what new development we might be able to welcome into the fifth ward, workforce housing, some sort of affordable housing component specifically would have a strong interest in an ownership model. But thank you to the city manager for your due diligence in finding an opportunity that's efficient, one that we own already. I'm really excited to continuing this discussion, and that's all I have for now.
And thank you, Alderman. Any other comments or questions? All right, Alderman Fisk, do you have another?
Erica, was there a appraisal done on the civic center property? Erica, was there a, an appraisal done on the civic center property in recent memory?
Oh, you're muted, Erica. You're muted again.
I don't think we have a recent appraisal, but we do have just the report from Jones Lang LaSalle, the consultant report from a few months ago, putting the value somewhere between 13 and 15 million. But, you know, the value of the property will always depend on what the use is or the future use is, whether it's housing or, you know, commercial or whatever it may be, and how we choose, if we choose to move forward, how we would choose to divide up the non-parkland property. I think it's pretty clear that we would not entertain selling any part of the park property. But certainly, this is a very large parcel. And there's certainly some opportunity to do something potentially with the remainder of the park, the property.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Alderman, say something?
I'm muted again. Since it's being presented as a reason for this to be a good idea, can you give me some more analysis of what you presume the economic impact on downtown would be? Is it just you're expecting that if there's more people there, there's more potential customers for restaurants and stores? Or has there been some actual, like, next level study of that? Because we're talking about city employees who are going to have been asked to take furlough days, or residents who'd be coming there to, who've also been affected by this, who are probably there to pay, you know, four overdue water bills. I don't, I don't know that unless there's something I'm missing, like that we're going to get the guaranteed economic impact that's being presented here as a reason to consider this.
We certainly could do a specific economic impact, and that would target, you know, the, the users of the facility and also the employees of the facility. And they would do an analysis on, on what that would look like. A general rule, there's, there's always an economic impact related to having the foot traffic there. And whether that's a high wage earner, a low wage earner, a medium wage earner, like that's, that's more detailed and refined. But simply the fact that you have the presence of civic center in downtown will generate quite a bit of revenue. And I believe that the last time we had a conversation about the library parking lot and whether or not that would be developed into office, Alderman Fisk might know this number off the top of my head, but I believe it was $3,500 per year per employee, or that's too much, maybe $350 per year per employee that would be spent in the downtown as far as associated economic impact. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I know where that study is, and I could probably pull it up in the next few minutes, or Alderman Fisk can jump in if she remembers.
It was more than $350 per year.
Yeah.
Okay. And this, this may be a question for Paul Zohmazak or something like that. But I mean, are we confident that anything that was studied before March of this year is still relevant and useful? Hey, Paul, sorry, man.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alderman suffered, and I think, I think everybody has to put on hold any assumptions about the way the economy works during COVID. But if we think long term, and that's, that's what this body, I think, does best is, is thinks and acts for the long term. There, there's no question that there would be benefit if, if resident, sorry, if there's the civic center in downtown. The way I, the way I view the civic center operating in downtown would be like a small corporate headquarters. If, let's say, let's say we normalize downtown, sorry, civic center operations at around 100 employees in the space. General rule of thumb is that office workers spend around $100 a week in the place that they work, both shopping and eating. So if you multiply that by the number of employees, I mean, there are studies we can do. But that, that's a kind of economic impact. And let's also remember that, you know, once, once we normalize with treatment and vaccine, that we, prior to, prior to COVID, we were having retail downturn. What do we do with vacant spaces? What do we do with, you know, the, the street level spaces that are kind of fading away? So adding more people to the downtown will help the remaining businesses that were struggling before COVID.
Thanks, Paul. And I don't want to refute or debate anything that you said, but if this body was good at long-term planning, I don't think we'd be in a situation where we have a civic center that's falling apart, we're trying to figure out what to do with it. This would have been addressed many, many years ago.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, Fisk?
Thank you. Well, Alderman suffered, and just briefly to one of the points that you raised, I think in, in the downtown, you, you look at, you know, what your, what your anchors are going to be. We haven't been lucky for a long time to have a retail anchor, but we certainly have had the library. And now with the, if we choose to do an addition of the civic center in the downtown, that's just an additional anchor. And we know, and Paul, you're smarter at this than I am, but we, we know that when you have an anchor, even if the anchor itself is not, is not generating, it generates when people leave the anchor and go out into the surrounding area. So people will shop at little stores, they will go to the restaurants, they'll do whatever they're doing downtown via ice cream cone, go sit at the, at Fountain Square. But it, it creates a, a dynamic that right now, all our civic center is doing right now is providing a really nice parking lot and a place to go pay your bill. So you come out of our civic center right now, and you're not saying, oh, where can I, where else can I go to have lunch or do something else? You're basically going in there and leaving. So that's one of the benefits why cities have traditionally located their civic centers in their central business districts, is that they get an added benefit, maybe not from the facility itself, but all the associated facilities. And I, I'll say that in the history of Evanston, when you look at when the downtown was being redeveloped, just right prior to 1920, that's why the Carlson Building and physicians offices, those were the anchors and the drivers, because they themselves weren't making the money or generating the money. But everybody leaving or using them was generating the money in the surrounding area. So it's real interesting and very consistent with, I think, what Paul's thoughts are regarding moving the civic center downtown.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
What do we know about the business that the library has generated? Has that been an economic engine in any way for the downtown?
Paul, do you want to find on that one, too?
Yeah, I, the, the short answer, there, there, I'm not aware of any study that we've done. But just take a look at it anecdotally. I mean, that, that building is beautiful, and it stabilized that lot. And we could certainly do it. I mean, I, I don't think we're in a financial position to do a study, but stabilizing, I, I've, when I've gone out to lunch, I've seen lots of library employees, you know, out and about. So there's no question it has had some impact. I don't know how much.
No, it is a beautiful building, and it certainly adds to the, the beauty of downtown. I was just, and I wasn't challenging you in any way. I was just curious if we had ever done anything, because I was there when we were in a temporary library, and the argument was it had to be downtown. And, and I'm glad we put it there, but I was wondering if we ever followed up. I don't remember that we did. I, I do have one concern about the library. I, I don't think we should share it with anybody. If we're going to have it, we should have it all to ourselves. It should be the city hall. However, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of some of those snowy nights at city hall. We have large, we have a large following of citizens at city hall. It's not all daytime coming to pay your water bill. It's people who come to city hall at night. And I'm thinking of walking down those streets and going into a parking garage at night after one of our meetings at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, after a plan commission meeting, after, I mean, that, it is, it is not convenient. The library is not convenient for very late nighttime meetings of large, of large crowds. The civic center, you can't get any more convenient with the parking. And, and you know how, I mean, if you want to have a five hour conversation about something, it's parking, you know, people want to talk about that. So that, that is something that I think about.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, pray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I've been quietly listening and to you and the city manager. I mean, it sounds like there's enough consensus to move forward and explore this and take it to the next level. So, city manager, in doing your exploration, is there anything else that you need from us to move forward? And my last question is, you're looking at it a aggressive timeline. When do you think we could make this move happen?
I think we need a little bit of time to have those conversations with library, with the library board, and then start looking at what makes the most sense to temporarily move there, and what other considerations we may need to address. So I'd feel comfortable bringing this back in June, probably not the next meeting, but probably the second meeting to lay out what a plan might look like if we were to proceed. So I'm confident we could gather all that information, if not for the first meeting, for the second meeting, and then think about how long that might take to implement. But I say this a lot, given that we had to take our entire operation online within a span of five days, and we've done it for, you know, over 60 days so far. Our, our staff's pretty incredible. And I, I think that if we had to do this on a, on a timeframe that was reasonable, we could do that without too much challenge. So.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Erica, you just mentioned, you know, conversations with the library. Have you spoken, have you spoken already to the director and to the board there to give them a heads up? Or are they hearing it for the first time right here on the city council?
No, no, I, I never like to surprise anybody. So, yeah, we, we talked with library leadership early on when this was first discussed at the last meeting, and then we went to take a look at the space. And then, you know, I'd asked the library at that time to convey that there was this interest with the library board, which they did. And then I reached out to them again last week to notify them that this was going to be on the agenda, and that if, if there was direction to proceed, that I would be reaching out to them again for these conversations.
The other thing I would ask the staff to look into when you do that, the next phase of the analysis here is, if you can calculate sort of an operating cost at, you know, the current civic center, somehow factor in there what the annual cost is we have to pay to do repairs and so forth, relative to another facility that we might have to go into. I think that would be helpful, too.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that item was just for discussion. That's SP two. We're going to move now to SP three. Alderman suffered, and could you introduce that one?
Good. I move Alderman SP three, which is a discussion of the city manager executive recruitment and an update.
For a second, maybe? Okay, all right. So, so there was a memo that staff gave us with an update on the search. You know, I know lots of us have been thinking a lot about it, myself included. And I just wanted to share a couple thoughts and just give a little background to folks at home that are, that are watching. We keep referring to, sometimes we say city manager Storely, but it's, it's interim city manager Storely. Because last August, Wally Bobkowitz, who had served as our city manager for 10 years, resigned to become the city administrator in Issaquah, Washington, to be close to his family. We all quickly agreed to install Ms. Storely at, who was the assistant city manager at the time, to be the interim city manager. And that was back in September 2019. In February, the city contracted with Gov HR, an executive search firm, to conduct a nationwide search. Soon after that, in February, we all found ourselves in the midst of this growing pandemic. And naturally, the city council put a hold on the search. At that time, we were getting ready to have community meetings. Tonight, we're going to discuss that amongst ourselves. And I just wanted to, to offer up that in light of the job that I think, you know, many of us think that Storely has done leading our city as the interim city manager, putting in place a responsible budget for 2020 that reflects the city's priorities and values, responding to the pandemic and effectively managing labor relations and leading our efforts to now adjust our 2020 budget due to the pandemic. I think we ought to consider elevating Erica Storely to be our full-time city manager. My rationale is based on several factors, including one, I feel strongly that we need a permanent leader of this city now. Very difficult decisions must be made, and everyone ought to know that a permanent leader is at the helm making those decisions. Given the pandemic, our national search will be reduced to selecting a city manager or deputy that is willing to leave their jurisdiction in the midst of a crisis. That is not the type of person I want to be the city manager of Evanston. Given the pandemic, many highly competent city managers and deputies would not apply for this job, recognizing that their duty right now is to their current jurisdiction. Furthermore, our vetting of the candidates will most likely occur virtually, as we're doing right now, which is not an ideal setting in which to select a CEO of a city. Most importantly, though, Erica Storely has proven herself over the last 16 years in Evanston to be an effective manager. She knows municipal operations because she's held many important jobs and roles here in the city, including as our web developer, as our citizen engagement manager, as our deputy city manager, as our assistant city manager, and now as our interim city manager. She knows Evanston. She shares Evanston's values and is well respected by employees, managers, and directors, as well as, I think, by Alderman, community leaders and residents. She is a straight shooter. She understands the job of city manager and interacts well with elected officials. She understands the nuts and the bolts of government. She rose up through the ranks. She understands budgeting, finance, public works, infrastructure, labor relations, technology, human services, and community development. She has demonstrated her understanding of this community's priorities on the environment, on equity, community policing, preservation, and aging in place. She has the right temperament, in my opinion, for Evanston, a city that can, at times, be a challenge to manage. She is even keeled, honest, and composed. She's committed to Evanston. She and her family own a home here and raising a family here. Her knowledge, commitment, manager, management, character, and leadership is evident, even more so now in the midst of this crisis. In my opinion, we have a great candidate in our midst, leading our city at a very difficult and unprecedented moment, in my opinion. It is in our city's best interest to elevate Ms. Storely to be the city's next city manager. So, you know, I just wanted to put out my, my perspective on, on this. And I know I've talked to some, we've talked to some of you, and, and others have been considering how we move forward. So let's open the, open the floor. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I've always been a big proponent of what I call developing talent. And that's how you get to know somebody. That's how somebody gets to know you. And obviously, Ms. Storely has been with the organization for quite some time, and has, has really demonstrated a solid understanding of, of what this community is about. And, you know, when you're, when you're engaged or working with, with an organization, when you need something, you have to figure out what you need. And then part of this public process was to, was to go out into a broader, you know, you know, big search, and see if people could kind of come in with interesting ideas. I think that at least that's what my perception was. I think what we need right now is somebody who understands our community. I don't think that somebody's going to come in and say, oh, you know, you should, you know, do your finances a little bit this way differently, and you're going to save X dollars. Erica has demonstrated a very solid understanding of not only what we need, but what the community values are, what's important. She's part of the community. And, and I think, you know, more than anything, the key thing for me is that she's earned the job, not just through the pandemic. not just through the pandemic, but she's earned the job through the course of a career. And, and I think that, that the organization has given her an opportunity to work her way through and, and that she's earned it. So I don't think we're doing anybody any favors. I don't think it is, for lack of other opportunities. I think that the best person has worked her way up through, through the ranks and is in front of us. So I, I agree with you, Mayor, that that would be the right way to go.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I agree with what you said and also what Alderman Wilson has said. I remember when Erica first arrived at the city and she has taken on one job after another, gradually expanding her expertise and her knowledge and really getting to know the city in ways that even serving on the city council, there are departments and inner workings of the city that we don't really have that kind of detailed knowledge of. And over and over again, Erica has proven more than ready to take on the job and done superb, superbly each time. I think, I would say there wasn't a one of us who, when Wally left, didn't look at Erica and say, I wonder if she'll, she'll apply, because we knew her so well and, and knew her talent. So I look at that and, and, and think about what is it also, as you said, what is it we need right now here in Evanston and what were our concerns anytime about hiring somebody new? And it's that adjustment. I mean, we're, I mean, every community is unique. Evanston has its own special uniqueness and that has always been a challenge for us when we hire anyone new. And Erica's chosen us. She's chosen to stay here. And with all of our uniqueness, that's, that's the nicest way I'll put it. And so I think over the years, as Alderman Wilson said, she's earned it. But I have to say, during this pandemic, Erica has, has gone so far and above. To me, you know, these, however many days we've been in this, 90, 100, I mean, these have tested her in all the ways that I would want to test any candidate who, who applies for this job. And she has more than satisfied me in all of those aspects. Over and over again, I hear from members of the community how glad they are that they live in Evanston right now. They feel safer here. They feel like our, the city of Evanston is doing a terrific job. They feel like they can get information. They're impressed by how quickly the city has pivoted on one complex issue after another. And that's Erica. And I think that when, when you think about where we are right now, we are facing a lot of really difficult decisions. And, and Erica has put this staff together. She has led the staff during what's got, that is the most complex time to be a city manager probably in all of our lifetimes. So I, I think that she has earned the job and particularly over the last hundred days, Erica has proven to me that she is more than ready to take this on.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Sufferden.
I, I agree with everything that everyone's saying about Erica. I think she's a great person. But when this process started, we all told the public that they would have input and this would be a public process. It sounds like right now everyone's looking to hand Erica the job. And if, if that's what people want to do, that's fine. But have you consulted with your constituents? Have we looked at any other candidates at all? There's 44 jobs posted on Gov HR's LinkedIn site right now. They have the capacity to do a search and they can bring us candidates. And I think that many of the people who live here, although the city manager works with the city council, city manager works for the residents and for them to be cut out of this process is something that the people who want to just hand this to Erica are going to be held accountable for. And I also will say that I, with all due respect to Erica and my colleagues here, I was here for the Kevin Brown stuff. I guess everyone forgot that happened. So let's not pretend that this hasn't had bumps in the road. And, you know, I think there are people on this council who allowed the previous city manager to be here too long. And now you're denying the people of Evanston the right to get the best possible candidate and then make a decision. So if what people are going to do is vote to give the job to Erica, like congratulations to her. But I think you're all going to be accountable to your constituents for that.
Indeed, indeed, indeed. I mean, this is the elected body and eventually this body is going to make a decision. So, and we're doing it in public. We're not doing this in executive session right now. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah. So I, you know, Erica, aside from this conversation, I think that we should move forward with the search because it is what we claim to do. I know obviously no one expected a pandemic. No one expected us to be doing all these meetings virtually. And I'm fully aware that we might not get, you know, the plethora of candidates we hope we get before this pandemic. But I don't think to say because there's a pandemic that people are not looking for a position, that there are not people who are looking for city manager jobs and would consider moving to Evanston. Granted, everything is very different now. And Erica has done a fine job. I don't, I am not ready to just say, let's give it to Erica because she's here and, and we've survived the pandemic. I think we, we do the search. We might find that we find somebody great. We might find that we don't find someone great. And I would hope that Erica, in her professional manner, would understand, you know, us not just, or me not just going forward with her now doesn't, you know, speak indifferent to her or it just speaks to transparency and we are a government and there's a process. I also understand her contract is going to come up and we might not be through with this process. And hopefully, you know, her commitment to Evanston will shine through and she'll be willing to stay as interim until we, you know, make a decision through the process, whether it's the decision to go with her or a decision to go with someone else. I would hope that she would remain in the leadership position she's in. Again, understanding that all of this has taken longer than we thought because of the pandemic. So I would very much suggest that we go forward with the search unless Gov HR has told us they can't do the search. We see what becomes of it. We, people are getting very accustomed to handling, handling things virtually. And so they can participate virtually. There's a variety of ways we can get input from our constituents and have whoever's interested come forward to the public process. And then again, if we don't find anyone or we decide at the end of the day Erica is the best candidate, we at least can tell our constituents that we've gone through a very public process, that they've had an opportunity to engage with and we've at the end decided Erica was the best candidate if that's what we so choose.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Thiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I've thought about this a lot and, and I, we are in unusual times. Erica, Erica has taken on a job that during this crisis that none of us could have anticipated. And it's almost a trial by fire to watch how well our staff responded. Now, that's not going to be the only reason that some of us will support her and her appointment. But it is an extraordinary testament, I think, to the quality of, of Erica. And we're nine members of the council who are very different people. We represent very different boards. We all have very different views on a whole number of issues. This is a difficult group to ride herd on and Erica's done an extraordinary job. So I guess my argument would be that, that we have observed Erica as city manager in, in times that we couldn't have anticipated. And she's risen above and beyond what any of us could have expected. And practically speaking, I, I think that given the decisions that we're going to have to be making going forward, we need someone in that position immediately, who everyone understands will have the support and authority of the council. It's going to be really tough. And I don't think that we're doing ourselves a favor by leaving anyone in an interim position. And especially Erica, who has, in my mind, already demonstrated that you would be an extraordinary city manager. So I, I'm, I'm going to support, I'm going to support this. And I'm going to suggest that, and even make a motion, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if that's something that you feel would be appropriate, that we ask our law department to enter into negotiations with Erica and bring that back to council at a future meeting for us to consider. So that's, that, that will be my motion.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe we'll need Kelly's opinion if we need motions and all, all of that. Or we're just trying to get some direction, direction here.
Sure.
Hold on that, Kelly. We can, we can circle back to that. Alderman, your sentence.
Thank you. And I want to second every compliment that was given to Erica and every vote of confidence. I agree 100% with my colleagues, but just trying to understand process and the expectation that we set with the community. I understand that the pandemic has changed everything. But if we're having a personnel discussion, do we do this here? I'm just curious and I guess I would like to hear more from Kelly about what is possible in terms of like our accountability to the community in process. And I, I do believe Erica has done a fantastic job. She's proven herself. She's earned the job. But we have communicated a process and an expectation to the community. So I want to understand how we can move forward with this. First, I'm hearing of it. I hadn't been a part of any prior discussions. I do think that it is a valid recommendation that I would support, understanding that we have gone through a process. It is appropriate to do it this way. So if I could hear more from the attorney and then also hear more about what was left pending in terms of process with the community, like where were we even at with the process? So if I could get an update on where we were at in the process of the search and if we've just abandoned it because of COVID or if I could have an update there to understand what has been done, what's possible and also what's appropriate.
All right. So let me, I'll give you the update on where we were with the search. We had, and correct me if I'm wrong, city staff, but we had scheduled a community meeting to get feedback from the community on what they're looking for in the next, in the next city manager. We were going to have two of the, two of those sessions. Pandemic struck. We ended up cancel, canceling those. That's my, that's my rec, that's my recollection.
Mayor, this is, this is truly ridiculous. Yes, to, to answer your question, correct. We had scheduled those meetings in mid-March, community input meetings to get some idea and kind of facilitate conversation and focus group to kind of figure out what the community were looking for. In addition to, we also were creating a survey that we're going to distribute as well. So those two things have been put on hold at this time. And, you know, looking for direction will be convened once more guidance is given.
Okay. Thank, thank you. And then Kelly, do you want to answer the other question of Alderman Wilson? As well as, as well as Alderman Thiss, motion question.
Yeah, just knowing us to have, you know, personnel discussions. I, I don't remember having them in a public setting like this. So if you could just give me any feedback.
Yeah, I don't think there's any rule or regulation prohibiting these discussions. Certainly the laws favor the, the council and the mayor and the city manager bringing most topics to the public, absent, you know, those restricted and allowed to be restricted under the, the OMA and the rules that pertain to those executive sessions, those closed sessions. So it, should the council want to continue discussing this, I think that's perfectly allowed under the rules. In terms of what controls city manager appointment, it's ordinance 1-8-1. And also in conjunction with that are our rules for city council, specifically 7.1 and 14.4. So what we would need, should there be, so should someone be inclined to make a motion to appoint Erica, would be a motion, a second discussion as usual. And then we need two thirds of vote of the city council or seven votes and the mayor also votes under 14.4.
Thank you.
I thought, just clarification on that, Kelly, because I thought, and I don't think we ever codified it or changed it. There was an issue where the city rule said it was, it took seven votes to hire or fire a city manager. But then the city rule or the, or the, you know, whatever the city rule was, that was, that was the city council rule. And then the law itself said, no, it only takes a majority of the city council members, not the mayor.
Yeah, it's majority votes. That's, that's what's in the ordinance and our rules adopted, say, seven. The rules actually somewhat conflict because it says city council, but then it allows the mayor to vote. So I would include the mayor's vote in that majority as part of city council's collective vote.
All right. Other comments, thoughts?
So if we, if we're moving forward with this as, as a possible action item, we haven't heard, as much as we may want the city Erica to take on this responsibility, we haven't heard from Erica. It just seems that there's some missing pieces here to move forward.
No, I totally, I totally agree with that. And I don't think we can have a vote on anything tonight. I think this has to be noticed and, and every, everything else. I think we're just trying to get some direction for how we, how we want to move forward. I got lots of hands up with lots of different Aldermen. I want to make sure everybody gets it.
I just want to just note in terms of a required national search, so there's nothing in our codes that require us to do a, a search in the way that council and the mayor has previously discussed doing it. So I just want to be clear on that.
Correct. Thank you. Alderman Revel.
Well, I agree that, you know, we did really tell the community that they, they would be involved in the process. But I think we all agree that this has been a totally unforeseen situation that we find ourselves in. And during all of this, we've had a chance to see Erica performing as a real city manager. And I agree with my colleagues who talked about what a fabulous job she's been doing for us. And I think it's really important for us to have continuity going forward as we work through the rest of the pandemic and then the recovery. And the other thing, the sort of image that came to my mind was thinking about, suppose I were going to be appointed to a jury. And then, and the judge always says, you know, can everybody come in and, you know, make an unbiased decision about the guilt or innocence of this person you're going to be discussing? And I mean, I would have, I would be a total failure. I would say, I'm going into this jury and I'm, no matter how many candidates you bring forward, I'm, I've already made up my mind. And so I, I 100% support our going forward with exploring, giving it off to Erica.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other, okay, Alderman Braithwaite. I'll hit, I'll hit two that have already spoken. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so I was also just quietly listening and taking it all in. I don't have any, you know, contradictions or compliments that were, were made. My question is process and I think Kelly laid that out fairly well. So if the next move then is to discuss it as an agenda item where it be noticed, and I don't know if that means notice for action, but as long as the public is aware of our actions, then I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Sufferden and then Thiss.
Just looking through emails here, we, we put together the survey March 18th. The survey was never distributed to the public. Is that correct? There was never a, the public input on the survey that was created, the 10 question survey.
Kimberly, do you know?
To your answer, Alderman Sufferden, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to note that one of the things in the header of the survey is, we value your input. And here we are with no community input on this higher.
Thank, thank you. Alderman Thiss. Are you muted?
Thanks. Yeah, I got it now. Okay. I, I, my, I just want to clarify what my motion was. So my motion was not to hire Erica, but to refer this to the city law department to negotiate a contract. So my motion was not to hire Erica, but to refer this to the city law department to negotiate a contract with Erica. And then we would vote on it. I see Don's just raised his hands, and I'm sure he can make more clarity out of what I'm trying to do than I'm doing myself. So is that correct, Alderman Wilson?
I would just, we're going to go to Don. I would just say, we're not going to have city staff negotiate with somebody who's going to be their supervisor.
No, and that's, and that's not really, that's not really what I meant. Don will clean this up, I think.
Alderman Wilson.
I was going to second her motion. Here's the bottom line, and, and, you know, we are all accountable for things. But when you, when you think about this from a practical perspective, you go out and you hire an employee, right? You do a couple of primary things. You come up with your wish list for what do I want my employee to have? You go out, you find candidates who meet the wish list, you talk to them. Maybe if you're lucky, you talk to them for a couple or a few hours. Maybe if you're lucky, they have a couple hours to interact with some other people, and then you check some references. I can't imagine another scenario where you could possibly vet a potential candidate to the extent our interim city manager has been vetted so far. So I'm 100% confident that this is the right hire. That's how I feel about it, because you, you know, you can't find somebody, you, you might find somebody who can do as good a job as possible. I can't imagine you can find somebody who can do a better job in our community. I believe as a resident of this community, because I live here too, and I'm a constituent, I want the person doing this job to understand what our community is about, understand the expectations. You can't teach that to somebody in a couple of job interviews. You just can't do it. So that's my perspective. So I was going to just second Alderman Fisk's motion that we have something put together to put on an agenda.
Okay, we've got Alderman Rainey and then Alderman, your sentence.
All right. First of all, I'd like to say something about sending paperwork off to negotiations. We are the ones who write up the items for negotiating. We don't have somebody else do it. The Evanston City Council goes into executive session and figures out what it is that we want to offer to the city manager, to the, the current acting city manager. That's, that's how that works. But secondly, I want to, this is anecdotal, but it's a true story. So we, years ago, we had a city manager by the name of Ed Martin, who everybody felt that nobody could ever top. So he left, and then that's where Joel Asbrooke came. He was the, he was the assistant city manager. So we did an executive search nationwide, you know, thousands of dollars. And everybody realized nobody could do a better job than the guy who learned from Ed Martin. So we hired Joel Asbrooke, and he did, in my estimation, just the most fabulous job any city manager could have done. And he had an assistant by the name of Judy Aiello, who was brilliant, and, you know, the two of them made quite a team. Well, when Joel Asbrooke went to bigger and better things after many years, we refused to hire Judy Aiello. We always had to go out to a city, to a search. We hired three city managers after, after Joel Asbrooke left. At all the time, having Judy Aiello serve as interim, but never hiring her. Every city manager never lived up to the job until Wally Bobquitz came along. And I, I know that he was controversial in some camps, but as far as I'm concerned, there was not a good city manager in all those years until Wally came along. And I think, given that, that Erica, you know, came up under him and has just proven to do such a spectacular job in such an organized way and under, I mean, not under normal circumstances, God knows what she would have accomplished under normal circumstances. But I, I would hate for us to miss this opportunity. And I think, I, I agree with exactly what Don said. This, this would be such a waste of time. So hopefully, we can explain to our constituents, and hopefully, they will already have seen what we've seen. So I support Judy and the mayor and everyone else who spoke.
Alderman, Alderman, your sentence.
Um, thank you. I, I'm just supporting Alderman Braithwaite at this point. I don't, I think that we are ready to move forward, whatever inappropriate process is. And I don't want my comments to come across as any resistance or lack of faith in Erica, because that's not the case, but I would like us to move forward in what an appropriate process would be, if that's possible.
What if we did, what if we did, what if we did this? I mean, because I, I hear people's concern about, hey, we haven't really heard from the community. But given that there, there seems to be a lot of support here for Erica and the job that she's doing, what if we, I mean, certainly people are going to see this, and they're going to say, wow, a lot of people think Erica's doing a good job, and she ought to be given the nod for the city manager. But we could ask, go out to the public with that, with that survey, hold a virtual sort of town hall as well, if we wanted. And ask people, what do you want in a city manager? And then in executive, in executive session, the council could decide whether they think that Erica Storley meets, you know, that, what people want, as well as the elected body, which is all of you, does she meet sort of the needs? Recognize that if we do that, people certainly could come back and say, well, that was just a charade, because look, they went and offered the job to Erica. So we're not, I'm, I'm not suggesting in this process, we go out then with our executive search firm, which just as an aside, we save money here, and we need to save some money. But that's not why I think Erica should have the job, because we can save $20,000 or whatever. But to, to do that and just, you know, take that input and say, hey, line that up with your personal and our personal opinion of what the priorities are here in the community, and ask ourselves whether we think Erica fits that bill. And then make a decision in the executive session before hauling in a bunch of candidates from around the country. Lots of hands went up to this, so let's go with Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Fleming, then your sentence.
I'll, I'll be quick. I just want to say thank you. I mean, I think that the plan that you just laid out provides me an opportunity to ask the residents of the second ward in terms of priorities. And I think that's the best way for me to position the conversation. And right now and for the next foreseeable future, that's what I want to base my decision on. So thank you for offering that suggestion, Mayor, and, and I'm willing to support that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fleming, and then we'll go to Alderman Ruth Simmons and then.
Um, so again, I, no offense to Erica, I feel very strongly about going to the executive search. I think it would be different if Gov HR, who we, you know, I didn't support, but we all said in professional, came to us and said, hey, we're finding that these searches aren't proof nowadays, the pandemic X, Y, and Z. We haven't, at least as far as I know, we haven't heard them say that. We're making a lot of assumptions. It might be true. But we should at least go to the search firm to ask them, what are you finding with these national searches now? You know, before with the pandemic, she said that she already was having people call about Evanston job. She thought there was going to be no problem finding people for Evanston. Obviously, that's going to change some. But we might find that people are still interested. So I, you know, I don't, I support having the search. I mean, in terms of what you suggested, Mayor, I do think that is going to be exactly what you laid out. I think people are going to say, this is all a sham, you're coming to us, we heard you all, you know, say that you liked Erica, that you're going to vote for Erica. So even if 50 people, you know, fill out a survey and, and put everything on there that's opposite of Erica, I think that the, the citizens will see, if we came back and say, you know, Erica fits the bill, the citizens will see that they wasted their time. Where, my bigger concern is that citizens won't necessarily participate, because they'll feel like, we heard a whole discussion, everybody liked Erica, they're just doing this to appease us. So I, you know, I'm concerned that what you laid out, although I understand what you're trying to get with it, which has caused more frustration in the community, because they've now heard us, you know, have a conversation, make a motion, talk about negotiations with Erica, but now kind of as an afterthought, saying, we're going to come to you and do this survey because we said, we have your opinion. So, I mean, if, if it's the will of the majority of the council to even have a vote tonight, and, you know, put it on the calendar for next week for negotiation, that's fine. I could just have my vote accordingly. But I do feel very strongly that not going to a surge or, and not even consulting a search firm to see what they think our prospects are, is just not good government.
And just, I, I stated at the beginning, my, my personal opinion is, if you're a deputy or you're a city manager somewhere, and you're willing to leave your city in the middle of a global pandemic, I've got, I've got issues.
That's fine, but.
I'm going to have, I'm going to have that issue, and it's unfortunate, but like, that's just my, my perspective. Like, I want to know you're here when times are tough.
I get that, but you're one of nine votes, and so I think that's why we have a democracy, that's why we get to vote. I, I don't see it that way necessarily, and I also don't even, we haven't gone out to even look for anyone. So, you know, I understand coming in with that. So that says to me, you're not going to go with anybody but Erica, because anyone coming from another job, you're going to see as, you know, someone who's leaving when the times are tough, your perspective.
Yeah, right, right. And I think, I think it's the most risk-free, not that there's not risk with Erica, but risk, risk-free, because it's a known commodity and somebody that's committed here. I do agree with you. Again, I sort of said it too, about people just saying, if we go out and say, hey, we want your feedback on what, what you're looking for in a city manager, and then ultimately go with Erica without bringing anybody else in or actually doing the process, they're going to say it's a sham. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Just back to process, I have to have some public process, and whether it's as you explained or some other way that we go back to the survey that Alderman suffered and brought up. It's important that if nothing else, there is education to the residents that I serve on Erica's role, the highlights of her career, what she's done great during COVID, how she's earned her way. Not having had a public discussion at all with the residents is inappropriate. And I'm hoping that we can, before we make any further decisions, come up with a process where we can at least get some feedback. And I hear you, everyone's heard us have all these compliments about Erica. And that's why I'm asking, like, how appropriate was it for us to have this conversation on, you know, on the agenda without any heads up? But at this point, we're here, we need to move forward with strong leadership. So I would like us to move forward with a process that at least gets some consensus from the community. And I believe that our community is reasonable and will get good feedback, and we're fair and will respond accordingly. But some public process is going to be necessary before we make such a significant decision for the people of Evanston.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, Lynn?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, I agree with both Alderman Fleming and Alderman Ruth Simmons. I don't think having a survey, especially after we've had this discussion, I think the survey was designed when we were involved in a different hiring process. But I do think we do need to have some kind of public aspect of this. Kelly has already explained to us that this is a perfectly legal, legitimate way to hire a city manager. We could have decided long ago that we weren't going to hire, have, have a big nationwide search, that we were going to work from within. That would have been perfectly appropriate. Instead, we did what we've done before, which is we're going to have a nationwide search. And, but times have changed. And as I said, I think that Erica has, as, as Alderman Wilson said, the last 100 days, more things have, real things have been thrown at Erica than we could possibly have come up with in any type of scenario in an interview process. But at the same time, I understand Alderman Ruth Simmons' concern that we make sure that, and I have this concern as well, that we make sure that the community understands that this is, this is one of two alternative ways that we could have done this. And they have put their faith in us. One of the parts of their electing us was, we have the possibility of hiring a city manager. You know, that's part of the, one of the jobs that is, is part of our job, that one of the things that they're electing us to do possibly. Now, over the years, more people have gotten involved in that process. But we, I think, as Alderman Ruth Simmons says, I believe the community is reasonable. I agree with her. I think what we need to do is let the community know that, that this is what we're contemplating and that, and, and our reasons for it, which have been discussed tonight. And that we put it on, on a city council meeting for, coming, you know, we put it in some way on a city council meeting, and the public knows, and the public has an opportunity to come and, and participate in the meeting and share their views. And a number of aldermen will have board meetings during that time, and they can hear from their constituents about this as well. And it will give us an opportunity to present Erica's, for the press to do some research, for the city to present Erica's resume. So I, I agree that we need to make sure that the public is moving forward with us, with us, and understands that we are living in a changed world. And I, every single person knows that to their core at this point. And so we are changing this. We're changing to the other alternative of hiring within. Hiring someone who we have, we've actually tested already, and she meets our expectations. So I think that we need to do, let the public know, and then put it on the agenda for a city council meeting to allow people to, to come and participate, and then move forward with the next steps. But I don't think a survey is the right way to go. I think we'll hear from people now that they know that this is part of, this is going to be coming up on the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. We got Alderman Fisk and then Alderman Braithwaite.
Okay, this is short. I absolutely agree with that.
Okay, that was short. Okay. Alderman Braithwaite, you may have the last word unless somebody else.
Perfect, yeah. I'll be short as well. I agree with Alderman Lynn that we not utilize the survey, but really focus on priorities and let that help us to move forward.
So, order point. Alderman Fisk gave me the motion, but I think at this point, based on what Alderman Lynn had laid out, perhaps it makes more sense to withdraw that motion, and we'll just proceed with the agenda.
And, and I will.
Okay, all right.
All right, let's, just so I'm clear, and we're all, we're all clear here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask council then, what is the appropriate way, what is the appropriate way to put this on an agenda? Sometime in the next few meetings, what, rather than a motion, but what is the appropriate way that we put this on the agenda then?
Kelly? Put this on as a special order of business for action.
What if we did it for introduction?
I like that. I like the idea of doing it for introduction, and then at a subsequent meeting, you do it for action, and that gives all the elected officials more time to talk to their constituents. You know, because there'll be a reward meeting.
So how about if I, how about if I make a reference that we put?
Say that again, Don?
How about if I make a reference that we put it on an agenda for introduction?
Second, or do you need a second for that?
Reference, yes, just a reference.
Okay. So why, why don't we put it on for introduction on June 8th? And then if it passes for introduction, then two more weeks from then will be whatever that next meeting is. And that basically will give about a month to get input and priorities from constituents in your, in your wards. And then Alderman can decide at that point. Sound good?
Well, and, and you know, Mayor, can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going on long. But, you know, if we, when we get these, this input, this input from the community is not going to be wasted. I think it's, it's things that we bring forward to Erica and say, these are critical issues to the community that, that have been highlighted to us when they are recognizing that we're in the process of hiring a city manager. So, you know, we are the conduit of those, of their input, and we can bring that to Erica. That's not, that, that's not meaningless in my mind.
Thank you. Alderman Suffolk, Alderman Suffolk, and then Kelly.
Just respectfully, we'll note that one of the reasons given for hiring Erica is that she understands the community already. So I don't know why she would need the information from the survey if that was true.
No, thank you.
Okay, I know, I know.
The people who defended Wally Bobquits the most are the same people who are pushing this.
All right, the people that dragged the process out for six months in getting an executive search firm are also saying, we want to go outside and find and see all the candidates around.
Yeah, let's see, let's get the best candidate, Steve.
Right, right. I think, I think we've got a great candidate here.
You have a great candidate. Is it the best in the country? Do you know that?
Well, you understand my philosophy, which is I don't want anybody right now that's willing to leave their community in the midst of a crisis.
It's not about what you want, though. This isn't your hire. This isn't.
I understand.
The city of 75,000 people.
I understand. This is the elected body. We're all collectively making that decision.
This is why we have a rules committee, because this is where this should be being discussed.
I, I move that we accept and place the report on file.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Alright, so the report.
Can I, can we just have Kelly put this, and mention rules committee, so we have discrepancy in the rule again, and the, and the ordinance? So can this be up whenever we get to those things that are discrepancies like this in the emergency order?
Yes. In fact, this was passed through Rules Committee under 18020, but it just hasn't gone to council yet for some reasons. There's already a draft circulating, so we'll tie that back up. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Alderman Suffering. And I know we have a difference of opinion on how best to move forward on SP3, but I appreciate you bringing this forward as a reference at the last, at the last council meeting. Let's go to SP4. Alderman Winn, could you introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution, SP4's Resolution to reopen Illinois restaurants on May 29. The staff recommends the city council consider a resolution to reopen Illinois restaurants. This is for action tonight.
Second.
All right, so then this is open for discussion. I'm going to go to Alderman Suffering. Are you muted, Tom? You're muted. You're, you're on mute.
There was supposed to be an addendum to this item?
Yes.
On the agenda?
Jump in for a second. So just a preface of why this is on the agenda and what we're planning to cover next. The governor originally had anticipated the soonest that restaurants would reopen across the state would be in late June. And he reversed course on that last week at the last minute, saying that it would be possible for restaurants to open as early as, after the 29th with outdoor considerations. So that left us with not a lot of time to put together some potential options for the council to consider. But we have put together a draft resolution, and it's been added to the website on the city council agendas page as an addendum, should the council wish to move forward with some, some relaxed regulations around outdoor dining. But we did have a short presentation around this item that I would like for Alzamazak to start off with, and then have a discussion about what this might look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe Laura Bit, thank you, Laura. Did you, did you want to start, Laura, and then I'll pick up? Or do you want me just to jump right in?
Why don't you go ahead?
Can, can you please skip? I think it's the third slide. So, thank you. It's, it's, there we go. So thanks in part to our diligence as a community. We're finally kind of arriving at the Restore Illinois Phase 3. Thanks to our residents for helping make this happen by following science-based health guidelines. We've all worked pretty hard to get to this point. And I wanted to just kind of summarize what Phase 3 does for restaurants. By the way, the state of Illinois has put together a really nice summary for Phase 3 for each industry cluster. I'm, I'm focused on restaurants because we, as we, as we'll discuss, we need to make some quick decisions about how to, how to allow restaurants reopen in Phase 3. So Phase 3 specifies that delivery and curbside are to continue. And what it's done is it's added outdoor dining. And I'm sure you've all heard about this. And I'm sure you've probably heard from some of your constituents already. So the outdoor dining includes rooftop and patios. And it even specifies indoor dining where you have walls or screens that, like, think of window walls like Koi has, you know, and I'm not validating Koi's system, I'm just saying Koi has that, that ability. Collectivo has that ability. So if you're operating tables within eight feet of a removable window wall, that's also considered allowable in the new phase. And then prohibited activities are indoor dining. You still can't sit inside a restaurant and eat. So staff has spent some time, we, we were anticipating this, and we had a meeting scheduled last week, actually on the day that the governor made the announcement, which is coincidence. You know, some of the concerns that we have, one is, you know, outdoor dining also includes sidewalk cafes technically. But we're, we're concerned that does, does operating a sidewalk cafe in the public right of way, does that give you, you know, the necessary social distancing that the, that the new guidelines require? You know, I guess that's going to depend on which sidewalks we're talking about. Some are wider than others. We have to use some common sense. But also in some preliminary studies that I ran, you know, it, there are, in order to keep a six-foot distance between, kind of think of, think of a tabletop that's 36 inches turned on a diagonal and four people surrounding it. That kind of diamond-shaped box needs about 300 square feet per setting in order to maintain social distancing on all sides. Now, if that's tucked up against the wall, then you, then you're kind of eliminating that, that one side. But you really need about 300 square feet per dining unit for it to make sense. Those are my estimates. So we need to make sure that, that, that that's happening. But when you, when you employ those guidelines, you really start to limit the number of tables you can put outside on a sidewalk or in a parking space. So what we need to do is, in our opinion, is to survey, well, I have here on the next steps to survey businesses to see if they even want to do this. And I think they do. We've preliminarily, we've heard that, that they would take advantage of it, and they want to find ways to, to operate outside. But we need to find ways of providing enough square footage for, for restaurants to operate. So some of those thoughts included, you know, do we, do we vacate certain sides of the street and allow outdoor dining in parking spaces, on-street parking spaces? You spread those out, you take up a whole block. And that way, you leave the sidewalk open, but then you provide a place for people to dine. Or, you know, is there an opportunity to use a city-owned parking lot? I think of my neighborhood in southeast Evanston, there are a couple of those, you know, on Main Street. Next, across the street from Vogue, for example. Are there, are there specific opportunities to close small sections of streets? You know, you could do, for example, and that suggests that we have to do some studies, but, you know, Main Street between Chicago Avenue and Hinman. And you do that, you know, Thursday evening through Sunday evening. So it's not closed permanently. It's done during the highest kind of demand times. So I, we think one of the next steps would be to finalize a resolution that, Kelly, I'm not sure if that's, if that's been posted yet. If you finalize a resolution to kind of relax the ordinance that governs the use of the right-of-way for dining, that, that would be kind of a next step. And then, and define in that, in that resolution, allowing alcohol service in designated, in the designated areas. So if I were to summarize in kind of three bullet points, let's take a look at sidewalk cafes. Do they work? Or do, or do we need to find another way of approaching this? Should we close streets periodically? Can we use public parking lots and have some kind of delivery system or carryout system to the parking lots? And I think that's how I would summarize it. Any questions? Or Kelly, did, did you want to add anything from the legal perspective?
Yes, so we put together a draft resolution and attaching it our guidelines that Ike has been working really hard in creating. And so what we're envisioning so far is we already have an ordinance section 726 that allows for outdoor dining. We would just, under the resolution, simply relax those, some of those requirements. So for instance, one of the requirements under 726 is that you need a plat of survey, you need professional drawings to show how the outdoor seating would look. I think we would probably all be in agreement that that would take a long time. That's not, that's not the purpose of trying to get this resolution passed. So those rules would be relaxed. Staff would look at each applicant on a case-by-case basis to determine if there's any safety risks in logistics for where the tables would go. There would be some sort of a drawing required, but again, not a professional drawing. And, and one of the things that really makes this work under 726 is that the businesses are required to indemnify the city for any loss on carry insurance. So I think that's important, especially when we're talking about setting up tables or outdoor seating where that wouldn't ordinarily exist. There's been talk right now of having the resolution and the lax guidelines around October 15. Some cities are proposing a longer time. I think some are shorter in duration. So that would be another consideration. And I think what's really important to note under 726, which, which we don't already have, is that under the resolution, we would really need the businesses to adopt the guidelines that Ike and Department of Health are putting together to make sure that social distancing requirements and sanitation requirements are being met. So I think on paper, this is easily done. I think the harder part is obviously the administration with staff and processing the applicants.
Right. And I would encourage you, I would encourage you to, to, to read, to take a look at the illinois.gov DCO, DCEO website in, in terms of, I mean, they have really defined every aspect of the public health components of this, including how bath, how washrooms are, are to be dressed and cleaned. It's, and Ike, Ike is proposing to adopt every aspect of that. It's pretty stringent.
Great, thank, thank you, Paul. Can we take that down and then we'll open it up for discussions among the council and the residents here? Alderman Braithwaite and then Alderman Rainey.
This could be a question either to Ike or, or Kelly. Can we put in, or is there any provisions in terms of testing for the servers or for the restaurants to provide some type of testing? I mean, you figure at some point, that's going to be a very high contact, high touch, even with the spacing. And so some businesses are doing screening, just the temperature. Is that something that we can look at? Or again, is that something that's provided?
I'll let Ike take that question. I, I think we can implement whatever we decide in terms of safety procedures, but I'll let Ike speak to what specifically the state is doing.
All right. Good day, members of the city council. Please forgive me, for some reason, I can't turn on my video. But in regards to testing, that is not the recommendation. The recommendation is for employees to have training in regards to COVID-19 symptoms and to also screen their employees on a daily basis. So if there are any employees who have any symptoms indicative of the coronavirus, the recommendation is for that individual or individuals to stay away from the facility and go home. Another recommendation, of course, is to ensure that staff are not coming to work when they are sick. So in situations, not that, that, these are the recommendations that we will apply to our restaurants to ensure the safety of the customers and of course, the staff by making sure that they have training, by making sure that they have these strategies implemented where individuals can be screened before they go into the restaurant. And that's actually for, for the staff.
I, I, I think I'm agreeing with you, but can you just restate the last part about the screening? That's, that's the heart of my question. How are they being screened? Like, an infrared device?
And. So, yes. So the way that screening is conducted, there are a series of questions that the employer will ask the staff. These series of questions will allude to what the symptoms are. There is a CDC guideline that provides what these symptoms are that can exclude an individual from a facility. So if you meet any of those symptoms, you are required to go home. One, of course, if you're running a high fever, if you have body aches, if you're having difficulty breathing, if you are experiencing any type of sore throats or loss of taste, these are the symptoms indicative of the coronavirus. And if you indicate that you have any of these, you should be excluded from the workplace. And of course, the, the temperature is taken by an infrared thermometer to indicate whether you're running a high fever or not.
Anything else, Alderman Braithwaite?
No, he, he addressed.
Thank you. Then we got Alderman Rainey and then Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey's running back. You're muted, Am. Unmute. You're still muted.
I pass. I pass.
You pass after all that. All right, we're going to go to Alderman Fisk then.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering, it's citizen come, I'm not a citizen, yes, it's coming. There was the, the reference to the restaurants now are making the money that they can be making by pickups and deliveries. And I, I guess, Paul, are you still here somewhere?
I am. Thank you for asking.
Okay. How much discussion has there been with the restaurant community about how much space they need? I, I don't want to do anything that would harm their ability to do pickups and, and deliveries.
Right, that's, you know, if, if we close streets or occupy parking spaces for dining, then obviously we're, we're limiting the ability to pick up. And that pickup and curbside delivery is going to be the, or and delivery to, to homes is going to be the primary vehicle for making money for restaurants until there's, until we get to whatever it's Phase 4, I think, maybe even till we're finished. So we do, we would have to be careful with that. And I, I don't, I don't know how to measure that yet. Like, I don't know. You know, we wouldn't want to block off both sides of the street if we're going to do on-street parking, sorry, on-street dining. And if we're doing kind of weekend-only street closures, we, we would have to work together as a community to figure out a way to allow a restaurant to run out the door, you know, half a block to give the food to somebody who's waiting. I, I don't know the answer to that part yet.
Well, I think these, you know, these are all good questions that probably the restaurateurs are in the best position to answer.
Yeah. And like I said in, in the, in the slide, we'll, we'll do a survey to kind of get as much input as possible. But I do know that dining outdoors is something that most restaurants really want to happen.
Sure.
Only adds a few tables.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we're not taking away, or making their, making what's now a moneymaker for them more difficult.
That's clear. I understand.
Paul, can you articulate, because I think a lot of Aldermen and I have gotten emails from people saying, hey, look at what they're doing in Boston or Seattle or these other cities, right, with the outdoor, with the outdoor dining and taking over streets. And you and, and/or Ike, just talk about the logistics that have to be answered. Because come Thursday, I think people are going to say, well, why hasn't this been done? And there's a lot of issues that need to be worked out, including the one that Alderman Fisk just raised, which the owner of Blind Faith did, which is, hey, I'm going to do, still do more business, because many people are going to self-regulate and just stay home. I need to do more, I'm going to do more business with takeout, and I need to be able to have people come up to my restaurant to get the food. So that's one, that's one logistical issue. Can you just articulate that so people understand?
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll talk just briefly about the, literally like the. I'll, I'll, I'll talk just briefly about the, literally like the physical logistics. And some of it is, Alderman Fisk had already brought it up. You know, we, we can't just start shutting streets down. It's, it's whack-a-mole. We don't know what other kind of problems we're going to create. So we need to make sure we're getting input from the business community on that. We want to identify spaces that are safe where people, you know, if there are adjacent cross streets and, and there's vehicular traffic, we want to make sure that people are, are safe in the public right of way. We want to make sure that our, our, our police and fire are able to, if we do have a street closure like we do with some, uh, uh, street festivals, that if there's a public emergency, vehicles need to be able to drive up the street. So those are some of the, the physical considerations. And then I, I think the bigger considerations are, are the health considerations. We want to make sure, and I'll let Ike step in, we want to make sure that we have the right distancing. You know, a table being six feet, a table edge being six feet away from another table edge doesn't account for people who are sitting in a chair and backing up. So now we have to make sure that we're creating enough space around the tables, the halo around those tables for safety. But go ahead, Ike.
Absolutely. And that's not, that's why we haven't gone in the direction of the sidewalk cafes, because we know that it is very limited and it'll be very challenging for us to have outdoor dining and having it in a very safe manner. And that's why we are suggesting at this point to consider street closures or parking lots. But before we dive into that direction, we also want to get a gauge from the community, from the restaurants to see people who are interested in it. I mean, there might be restaurants who are satisfied with just curbside pickup or delivery or, or takeout who might not want outdoor dining. But I think the overall consensus is that a majority of our restaurants will want some type of outdoor dining. But what is paramount in the direction that we're taking is to ensure the safety of our customers and of course, the staff. And that's why the guidelines that we've illustrated would definitely help us in this process.
And we're not just talking their safety in terms of being safe from, you know, getting an infection, okay? Because people are too close together for too long a time, but also safe from automobiles and other, you know, traffic that goes on. Paul?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to add something. So, um, on Friday, if, if we, if we go into phase three on Friday, I think that was the timeline or Saturday, whatever day it was or is, um, there are some restaurants that have private space already that's outdoors. You think of Five and Dime has a rooftop. Firehouse, you know, they just expanded their outdoor patio last year. There are some establishments that have backyard, backyard patios. So there's not much that we have to do from a regulation standpoint and we're, and we'll figure that out as staff in terms of making sure that they're abiding by social distancing. But they're in the pub, they're in the private realm and they can quickly establish themselves, right? So, so on, on Saturday or Friday night, those businesses, Kelly, tell me if I'm wrong, I think they're close, they, they could probably ramp up very quickly. It's the other, like, we're trying to create public spaces for restaurants that don't really have the space to operate outdoors. Like Peckish Pig has a nice patio, Good to Go has a nice patio.
But, but take those two, for example, Peckish Pig and Good, Good to Go. They already have a, a right, you know, under their, their license to have outdoor, you know, ser, service. Um, you know, as long as they're abiding by the rules, Ike, is there anything they need to do? Or come Friday night and Saturday, can people in Evanston go there and, and have a meal outside on their patio as long as, again, they're complying with the social distancing?
Even, even though they are licensed facility with outdoor dining allowed, they still have to comply with the guidelines. They have to ensure that their tables and seats are arranged in a way where it is six seats or more apart. So would that mean that they will have to reduce the number of seats and tables that they have in their patios? It might get to that. So they have to ensure that they follow the guidelines so that people are protected.
Correct. But they don't need anything, a special certificate or anything from you before doing?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. So that takes care of one, one group, right? We just need to make sure they understand and they're following the rules. And the reality is, uh, they're also going to have customers that are going to call in and complain to people, hopefully to the restaurant themselves, uh, that, hey, they're not, they're not following the rules. Okay, I'm sure that'll happen. But then there's the second group, Paul, which you're talking about. Can we find parking lots in, in the nearby area or take over some of the, uh, do a little street closure or something?
Correct.
Got it. Uh, Alderman Ru Simmons.
I, I may have missed this, but for those that don't already have the license, uh, or some outdoor space, is there a rollout for them to participate in some way? So for example, like a, um, like a lighthouse who has, uh, you know, our patio that is right there, or even Lighthouse and Giro Planet, they could maybe share that patio space and even the driveway right there at Gibbs with some, you know, pro seating or something like that. Is, is that something, I understand that they don't have that current license, but is there discussion about supporting them and being able to expand their business in this rollout?
I, I'd like to answer some of that when Ike and Kelly can back me. So Lighthouse, Lighthouse has access to the patio through their lease at Gibbs Morrison. So they're, they're fine. They just need to make, we need to make sure there are tenant that, that their tables are spread out outside. And one of my internal suggestions, uh, with, with our, with our, my colleagues, is that the kind of yard, the backyard or the side yard of Gibbs Morrison might be a place that Euro Planet and, uh, you know, the ice cream shop could, could share. You know, it's, it's our space and we could come up with, it, it really has nothing to do with a sidewalk cafe license. That's, that's kind of a separate thing. We're saying if, if there, there are a number of public spaces that we'd like to create and Gibbs was one of those that I had on my list, if restaurants wanted to use that, that space, that they could apply to operate there. Kelly, do you think, did I?
Yeah, the best way, so the ordinance really does focus on sidewalk cafes, but if you read carefully, it is buried in there. It's really to do with all public spaces. So it's just the easiest way for staff to administer this, I think, for each business to apply. And then the staff can look and say, what is your unique space? Do we have public space for you to put tables on and then approve it on a nap pack basis? So under the way that the ordinance is currently written, a lot of those businesses wouldn't get through because the requirements are so stringent. So the, the resolution in a, in essence, would relax those requirements and staff would really would be working with each individual restaurant to ensure that they can get some outdoor space.
Okay. I would just like to either staff or I can reach out with, um, the operators of, um, CNW Ice Cream, Giro Planet and, and Lighthouse to see if they would have some interest in sharing public space. And then I don't know with the, um, school being closed, if there's access, and I don't know what while use operations are. I believe that they are doing virtual, uh, programming for their kids, so that parking lot even, um, might serve as a, um, a dining area as well. But if we could just keep that central Evanston, um, business district in mind as we are rolling this out.
Yes, it's on, it's on the list already.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, uh, Wynne, did you have your hand up earlier? Did you want to speak on this? Okay. Uh, Alderman Fisk then and Alderman Wilson.
Uh, Paul, could you do me a favor? Is it, would it be too hard to, uh, plot out a, a, a map, just locating where the restaurants are on it? I, I'm, I'm thinking that if we consolidate, um, as Alderman Ru Simmons was saying, if we can consolidate some service for restaurants, smaller restaurants that are within a certain area, again, I'm thinking of library parking lot, um, and other, you know, public areas, um, you know, the park on Central Street, places like that where you could have tables that are maybe jointly available. Um, maybe that's something, although I, I imagine that for some restaurant owners, just having a table out in front demonstrates that, yes, they are open and may remind people to come in and get, to take. So I think there's a whole bunch of things here, but is it possible that we could get just a, a map with dots on it?
Yeah, we could do that. So, um, kind of the, the philosophy behind the spreadsheet I created, and we could just map my spreadsheet, i- is just that. So, um, I think of, um, you know, the library parking lot, our, you know, our favorite parking lot, um, could be used in the short term to help Celtic Knot and Vietnam Nam and Prairie Moon.
Exactly.
There's consolidation there.
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Hackney's on Harms where they have that, you know, their funny bit there, but then in the summertime, they have that whole outdoor area that's connected with some service at that, the outdoor area, but maybe we could have something like that, that brings in more restaurants to share like half that parking lot. Maybe that, I, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think creatively here.
Okay, for discussion purposes, I, I want to point out, and then I'll, I'll, I'll stop. Um, you know, in a common area like that, we have to figure out who's responsible for making sure the tables are clean and sanitized.
Right.
And one of the thoughts too was certain areas that are designated dining areas, uh, people could use their mobile device, order the food, stay there at this lot, food can be delivered along with, with beer or wine. And, um, and then that restaurant's kind of responsible for, I, I, I don't really know how to regulate. I'm not, I'm not the best regulator. Thank you, colleagues are better at that.
But that, I, but that idea, and I've heard restaurateurs talk about it, and I think Annie talked about it, uh, we have some downtown or in these different commercial districts around town, dining areas, and you can almost do like a grab and go, but it's marketed around, you know, grab and eat here in our neighborhood at this loc, at this location. All right, lots of hands up. We've got Alderman Wilson, Braythwaite and then Ru Simmons.
Um, well, first of all, I appreciate the creativity that went into this, uh, and this just gives the staff a lot of latitude in coming up with solutions. The thing is, these businesses and the restaurants, they're almost all unique, they're almost all completely unique, you know, based upon the sidewalk width or what street they're on or their circumstances. So, um, the way this is written, it does give you a lot of latitude to, to make these accommodations. So I was going to, you know, I don't think we're going to, you know, walk through any given specific restaurant or business at this, you know, in, in this discussion, but I, I did want to just move that we, um, adopt the resolution. Um, and I just want to double check, Ms. Gundersky, um, the draft is on the website, right? Is that the current draft?
Yes, I was told it was uploaded, um, this evening. We've been working on it.
Okay.
We had some working drafts, but the most recent one is uploaded.
Okay, so I see that. Do, we don't need to read it, do we, word for word or anything like that? Is that correct?
No, we could, I think it's just enough to adapt the resolution that staff can administer the auxiliary setup of tables for outdoor seating, um, through the resolution, through a resolution.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to move that we adopt it.
Second.
All right. Uh, well, it was definitely, okay, moved in second and earlier, so let's.
I wasn't, okay, sorry.
That's it, that's, that's, that's okay though, because we've got a couple more hands and then we can take the vote. Uh, Alderman Braythwaite?
I'll, I'll be real quick, I'm sorry, I stepped away. I, I heard two things and one is, um, you know, the restaurant discussion, but then it sounded like the outdoor seating, so that's part of the, I can go back and read it. And did we discuss BYOB and the opportunity for someone, when I stepped away? Did anybody bring that up?
We did. We did not.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that, that to me, for, for a lot of reasons, whether it's just monitoring it, kids, lost revenue, so I, I would want to see if this is just for introduction, that staff bring that back and clearly?
It's for action.
Pardon me?
For action.
It's for action because where they, because again, they need to move so quickly on this.
I, I, then I don't want to slow it down, but I do think that that's something we should address for obvious reasons.
Paul?
Uh, perhaps, uh, we could work with our restaurants, uh, for the most part, any pub, any use of public space will have some kind of agreement with the restaurants, we're going to use it. So we would, and, and they would be self-motivated to encourage their, you know, diners not bringing their own because they need, they're trying to sell for margin. So, um, we, we could, you know, Kelly and I could work out some language that kind of puts the onus on them to monitor the, the spaces, um, in some way. I think that, the BYOB just wasn't even on my resume, I appreciate that.
Sure, sure. It's what I do, what I do, Paul.
So, so Paul, in, in, in the guidelines that provided, we have some language in regards to crowd control, minor protection, but nothing about bringing your own beer. So that's, that's very good that he brought it up. We can have revise the guidelines to put that language there. Um, but there is something there in regards to crowd control because that will be put on the on this, out of the restaurant owners to ensure that they are controlling the number of people who are going in and out of those outdoor dining areas.
Ike, I think that should be part of the guidelines, is that the city has discretion to limit the number of occupants per, per facility.
Ike, for the, for those that have outdoor dining, um, you know, approved by, approved by the city on sidewalk or rooftop, is there any requirement that that has to be reservation only? Or can, you know, a hundred people show up to Five and Dime, standing in that hallway, waiting for a table and there's only 20 tables out there?
Well, the recommendation is for them to order online, make reservations online, um, for them to, of course, comply with the six feet distance when they are queuing at, at the, at the restaurant. Um, I, I know that that's going to be quite hard when you have, you know, 50 to 60 people who are wait, waiting in line. Uh, but that's the recommendation for our restaurant owners to ensure that they control the crowd and also as they are having the crowd come to explain what the recommendations are, to have posters outside the, the dining areas so that they know that as they're waiting, that they have to comply with those recommendations. And another recommendation is as they're waiting, their turn to stay away from the premises or wait in your vehicle, uh, then when their time comes for them to go to the outdoor dining for someone at the restaurant to beg them to come. So these are recommendations that we put in place because we also understand that there's going to be that difficulty where we will have a number of people just standing outside.
Okay, but it's not a requirement that they have to have reservations, but it's strongly suggested that they do?
It's, it's a strong, it's a strong suggestion. Uh, and like I mentioned, one of the suggestions is for them to remain in your vehicle if their turn has not come yet. Then when their turn comes, then they can go into the outdoor dining area.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Ru Simmons and then Alderman Wynne.
I'm just curious, you may have mentioned the concessions at the lakefront, are they opening and operating as normal?
Not to mind, not right now.
Um, I could answer that. We, we don't have a vendor at this time. We, um, back in January, we were working on an RFP for the lakefront and, um, it's, it's been put on hold until next year.
Okay.
Alderman Wynne?
Uh, probably a good idea, Paul, considering we have so few bathrooms open. Uh, but, uh, my, my point was, I was, uh, Paul and I were both on, uh, the Business Task Force phone call earlier today, and there was a lot of discussion about this topic. And one of the things that was raised was, uh, that the chamber and the business districts were all going to urge their restaurateurs to communicate with their customers ahead of time in terms of what they should expect and how it should be, uh, how they were planning to open and, um, and, and give them lots of information so that you didn't end up with a pileup or people arriving with, uh, not really knowing what was going to, what they were going to be dealing with. So, uh, that was a, that was a part, a big part of the discussion today was to really push the word out to the restaurateurs to start contacting your customers right now and letting them know what to expect. Um, because they're also concerned, uh, about who's going to come out. There, there are a lot of them that are really concerned and have expressed, uh, worry that their customers aren't going to come back even for outdoor dining.
Thank, thank you. Um, all right, seeing no more, uh, discussion, uh, we had a, um, this item was moved, S B four, resolution to reopen Illinois restaurants. Uh, and this is a resolution, uh, from the city. Uh, this is for action, it was second. Uh, this is for action. It was seconded. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed. Robin, you're.
Aye.
You're an aye. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So that, this, uh, resolution, uh, for SP four passes nine, nine to zero. Uh, we're now going to move to the consent agenda. Alderman Fleming, could you, um, take us through, uh, the minutes, starting with O one, then through all of APW?
Yeah, on the, um, on the agenda says Alderman Rainey, so I'm happy to do it, but it changed and I didn't realize it.
But are you still, you're.
I, I have no idea. I thought I was chair, but am I still chair? Okay.
You're still chair. Yep.
All right. So the, uh, um, Kimberly, just have them change it next time. This is Robin here. All right. So the consent agenda for administration and public works begins with A, oh, minutes, sorry. For city council minutes is. Oh, one approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 11th, 2020. That is for action. Um, A one is the consent agenda for administration, public works. It's the approval of City of Evanston payroll bills and credit card activity. Staff recommends, recommends approval of City of Evanston payroll for the period of April 27, 2020 through May 10, 2020, an amount of $2,761,267.47. May 27, 2020, in the amount of $3,457,497.66. And the credit card purchases period ending March 26, 2020, in the amount of $195,656.69 for action. A two is approval of BMO Harris credit card.
Remove that please.
Uh, remove that. A three is the approval of authorization to execute a payment in the amount of $87,696 to Evanston Township High School for providing food services to assist those affected by school closures due to COVID. This is for action. A four is approval of contract award for J A Johnson paving company for the 2020 MFT street resurfacing bid, um, excuse me, street resurfacing project. It was bid 2026. Staff recommends we authorize city manager to execute this contract in the amount of $1,297,700. Funding is provided from the motor fuel tax fund in the amount of $100,000 and the rebuild Illinois grant fund in the amount of $1,200,000 for action. I'm going to remove A five, please. A six is the approval of a sole source purchase of.
Would you remove that please?
Remove A six. Uh, A seven, I'm going to remove. I have a question. A eight is adoption of resolutions forty-three dash R dash twenty and forty-five dash R dash twenty, authorizing the mayor to sign Illinois Department of Transportation resolutions with improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for improvements to various, um, street. Um, staff recommends we adopt the resolution for the mayor to sign these contracts. Funding will be provided by the motor fuel tax fund in the amount of $100,000 and revealed Illinois grant funds in the amount of $1,200,000 for action. A nine is resolution forty-four dash R dash twenty, authorizing the mayor to sign resolution for the maintenance of streets and highways in order to transfer funds previously allocated in the 2020 fiscal year budget from the motor fuel tax fund to the general fund for general maintenance of streets. Um, staff recommends we adopt this resolution for the mayor to execute this contract. Um, to transfer $1,44,890 of motor fuel tax funds to the general fund for the general maintenance of streets by city forces. Um, this is for action. A ten is resolution forty-six dash R dash twenty, authorizing the city manager to sign the first amendment to the Dyna, Dynasty Master Agreement. Staff recommends adoption of this resolution. The extension is for the municipal aggregation of electric supply for residential and small commercial retail customers with Dyna, energy services. This is a 10 month extension. We'll extend the contract from August 2020 to June 2021 for action. Uh, A eleven, I'm going to remove please. A twelve is ordinance fifty dash O dash twenty, amending city code section 10 dash 11 dash seven. Schedule seven A passenger loading zone, public carrier stops and stands to add a loading zone at seventeen twenty-three Simpson. Staff recommend ordinance. This item, um, was not approved by parking and transportation committee as there have been no meetings due to the pandemic. However, Alderman Rue Simmons is asking for this item to be presented for approval from Mills on Wheels to begin operations. This is for action. Eight thirteen is ordinance fifty-one dash O dash twenty, authorizing the sale of aging surplus vehicles and equipment owned by the City of Evanston. Staff is recommending we adopt this ordinance directing city manager to offer the sale of vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction at Govdeals, an online auction system. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, so the items, uh, consent agenda has been moved and seconded. City clerk, can you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Suffery.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey. Sorry, Alderman Rainey. Uh, I, I can record your eye. I can see it. Uh, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite. Just a quick, uh, just as a point of information, did we somewhat remove fifty-five dash zero dash twenty, amending, amended amusement tax?
Yep, that's removed.
It's, okay, thank you. Aye.
Go on, clerk.
Alderman, uh, Wayne.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, everybody. Thanks, clerk. Uh, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Uh, we're now going to move to the item three move. Alderman Fleming, can you pick up the A two?
A two is approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity in the amount of, oh, for the period ending March 26. The amount of $178.30 for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. City clerk, can you please take the role on A two?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffery.
Aye, abstain.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
And Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
All right. A two approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card passes the city council on an eight to one vote. Uh, Alderman Fleming, if it gets to A five.
Yes, A five is approval of contract award with McGill Construction LLC for the 2020 parking lot improvement project. This is for the parking lot improvement project in the amount of $282,249.95. Funding is provided by Geo Bond, um, fund. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is open for discussion.
I'm just voting no, so I took it off.
Okay.
Why?
Seeing no, seeing no discussion.
Because it's the, isn't this the parking lot for the service center?
Yes.
Yeah. So I would just like us to conserve funding and I don't know that this is, um, something we have to do right this second.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Revel.
Uh, well, I would like staff to, um, explain to us why this is, um, something that we need to do right now.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, city staff? We have our historian or Dave Stoneback or?
Hello. Uh, good evening. I'm here, Alderman, city clerk, Dave Stoneback, Public Works Agency Director. Uh, this parking lot is in, uh, fairly poor disrepair. It, this is a project that has been continuing to be put off. And, uh, we just want to proceed with it now. A lot of heavy vehicles go through that parking lot on a daily basis. All of our sanitation trucks, all of our, uh, salt trucks during the winter. So this, this parking lot gets a lot of abuse. It is full of potholes and ruts right now. And, uh, we'll only get in worse condition if we do not repair it.
And so what's the, so let me just ask this, Dave. I mean, does having all these potholes and everything, uh, just create additional wear and tear on these vehicles that cost a lot of money and that we also have to spend money repairing?
It, it does create some. When if you don't repair the, the asphalt surface, you wind up having to replace the, uh, the base of the parking lot as well. And that's to, to the point where we're getting at now. If we don't make these surface repairs, we'll wind up with a much more expensive repair fixing not only the asphalt surface, but the base of that surface as well.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah. So Dave, let me ask you a question. And so, um, why was it, why has it been put off for so long just because of the cost? I know we did some other repairs at the service center. Don't remember exactly what they were, but.
We, we, I think I've been trying to budget this for the past five years, but that I've been the director of public works. And because we have other projects at the service center that has taken the funding for this work to other projects, such as the, uh, parking deck actually had a, a section of concrete fail and, and drop into our garages. So instead of paving the parking lot, we spent our money, uh, reestablishing the parking deck and making that safe and secure.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. This was moved and seconded. This is item A five approval of contract award with McGill Construction, uh, for the 2020 parking lot improvement project at the city service center. City clerk, can you take the role, please?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Suffery.
No.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
All right. Uh, A five passes the city council on a five to four vote. All right. Uh, next item, A six.
Approval of the sole source purchase of Arboretic fungicide from. Scientific advancements. Staff recommends council authorize city manager to execute an agreement for the sole source purchase of 60 gallons of Arboretic fungicide from Rainbow Tree. Scientific advancement for total purchase amount of $25,273.20. This, um, funding is coming from the general fund. Um, this is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The side is open for discussion. Alderman Fisk.
Uh, yes, I, I asked for this to be taken off the agenda because, uh, my hope is that tonight someone will move to reconsider uh, the vote from, um, the previous council meeting, um, that cut the number of elm trees to be annihilated in half. And my, my thinking is that this amount is, um, if we reinstate uh, those trees, that this amount may change. Um, so I understand that they're, they're not obviously connected, but I think they, they might be. And I want to make, make it very, um, a very careful decision here that we're not either over or underbiding.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, I voted in the affirmative to, um, divide the injections of Arboretic of our elm trees into two years, which I did because of shortage of money and understanding the problems that we're having with our general fund. However, since that time, um, it's come to me, uh, that we do have some money that could be used to provide for injecting all the trees in one year, this year. And that money is, um, close to $300,000 of, um, earned interest in the capital fund. Uh, 290,000 to be exact. Um, with that money plus money, I understand that has been, uh, raised by, um, those who promised to do so in the interim. Um, we could actually pair that with the money that you see on our agenda tonight for half the trees and do all of the trees. So I am going to move to reconsider the vote that was taken at our last meeting to only inject half of the trees so that a new vote could be taken to inject all of the trees. I therefore move consideration.
Second.
Okay. So that's been moved and seconded. Kelly, Gandersky.
It's not allowed. Um, rule 22.1 says that, uh, a contract for purchase, whether made by motion resolution or ordinance, may be reconsidered at the same meeting at which the vote was taken.
All right. I object to your objection because that was not really a motion to purchase. That was a motion having to do with the concept of not injecting all the trees. That was, that was not a motion that we only spend this amount of money. That, that motion is up tonight. The motion that I'm, uh, reconsidering is a motion that said, oh, we can't save all the trees. We're only going to save half the trees. This is a money motion tonight.
Alderman Wilson.
Okay. Two things. First of all, Mr. Stoneback, my recollection was we were going to be buying this for our own use in any event. Is that correct or not correct? Am I remembering that wrong?
Uh, the A six is to purchase the fungicide to inject by our city staff for 171 trees that are not part of the contract.
The way we're not talking about, I'm talking about reconsidering.
We, as a point of, where we cannot, Alderman Rainey, with all due respect, that was a separate contract purchase for, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, that was for purchase for the company to do half the trees this year and half the next year. This is a whole other contract for us to purchase the fungicide. So any motion for reconsideration or rule 22.1 has to be made at the same meeting that the vote was taken.
But I'm not talking about a reconsideration of, to spend money. I'm talking about the concept, which is the fight we had last meeting and that we've been, um, we've been receiving lobbying information about all this week. The most, it has to do with the idea of not doing all the trees. Not, not, not spending this money, the 350,000, whatever. It has to do with, is the city going to say, going to deal with all the trees? Or is it going to deal with half the trees this year and half the trees next year? That's the issue I'm concerned about.
Okay. So, and I wasn't done yet. So, but we have, there, there are two separate things. We have A six, which was moved, and then there's a motion related to something different. You know, I think Alderman Fisk indicated that she thought whether or not that gets reconsidered. Setting aside the procedural question, Mr. Stoneback, the question I have is A six, we're going to buy this stuff whether we do all the trees or none of the trees. Is that correct?
That would be staff's recommendation because again, these trees are not included in that contract that was discussed at the last meeting. These are trees injected by city staff once every three years. So if it didn't fight this chemical, there would be 171 trees that would not be injected.
No, no. That, that does, my, my, my.
I understand, but it seems like we're talking two different things.
I'm sorry. My motion has nothing to do with buying the, I'm going to vote for this too. My motion has to do with reconsidering the concept of only doing half the trees. I want to get that over with.
But we have A six on the table first, so we have to deal with A six, right?
If I may make a note to Alderman Rainey's, uh, point, she can make a motion to suspend the rules. Um, and as long as there's no outside legal pressure, you can suspend the rules and move forward with Alderman Rainey's proposal.
But I don't think I have to suspend the rules.
An emotion to suspend the rules requires unanimous vote.
Right.
I know.
But Kelly, can I ask you a question? Because it seems like the council's practice, and many of you here are much more senior than I am on their practice, but it seems like their practice has been that they have allowed for reconsideration at a subsequent meeting. It has to be the next subsequent.
No, not always.
I thought that, I thought this council has done that in the past.
We've done that before, I think. Yeah.
They've done it wrong. And I've said they've done it wrong. But I'm not talking about spending money. I'm talking about the idea. Now, my motion, if you're saying my motion is misplaced, that's one thing. But my motion does not require. But my motion does not require, it had to have been last week.
Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, the point I was trying to make in um in in taking this off the table was that in the hope that there was a motion to reconsider, this number may change if all the trees are inoculated. Um, and I.
That's the point. It doesn't, it doesn't change.
Yeah, Dave said we need to buy.
It won't.
These are for trees that are not in the program, according to Dave.
I understand. They're always in the program.
I understand what Dave Stonebeck is saying about the program, but um, I mean, there are discussions going on that can we get more of our staff to inject the trees? If so, we need more stuff. I think, I think looking at it and taking it piece by piece, do we inject all the trees or not? If we don't, if we do inject all the trees and we have more people working on it, this number may change. That's why I took it off the agenda. Those pieces, those pieces go together.
And any tree getting injected is in the program. I mean, let's face it.
No, you're not hearing, well, I, with all due respect, I think what Mr. Stonebeck is saying is that these trees that are getting paid for from with this $25,000 is not part of that all the trees calculation. This is outside of the.
They would, they, we always do that with some of the trees. This, they're all part of the program. They are all part of the universe of elm trees that need injected. Ask anybody.
Okay, well, I think we should, you know, A six, this was moved and seconded. It's on the table. I think we should approve funding for treating these trees. And that's the, that's the first motion, right? So should we deal with that? Then we can deal with another motion if there's another.
I think we should deal with, I think we should deal with that because that's the, this is at hand, and then we can take this other motion. Alderman Rue Simmons?
So we, I I don't have enough information to be comfortable with any of this because I asked for a map of where the trees are, the trees that will be lost, those that aren't treated. And um we'll clearly have some disparities in uh neighborhoods being able to pay the $323 or whatever it is to have trees injected. And what um sort of process of equity are we using to address that? I understand that there is a organization looking to raise funds that can um subsidize that gap if we do move forward with using um some funds, but I just don't have enough information. I can't be in support. I don't know the difference between the elm tree and oak tree, and I need more education. And I'm not comfortable being okay with not knowing that we may lose trees in our neighborhood and also knowing that with concentrated poverty, we won't have the ability to um save the trees where other neighborhoods will have um the ability to save the trees. So um is it possible to get more information on where the trees are? Because trees matter to us in our neighborhoods as as they do in every neighborhood. And I would prefer that we don't lose any trees um if that's possible.
Thank you. Alder Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, um Alderman Simmons. The proposal I'm going to make, and if I can make it after whatever going on is going on. Um, and I I truly believe that Dave Stonebeck is not a supporter of doing all the trees uh in one year. However, having said that, the proposal I am making is nobody's going to have to pay $350 for a tree. It's all going to be paid for. So that's, that's the deal.
Right. And and just so we're all clear, and also the deal is if it all got back onto the table, we can have another $400,000 we have to.
Absolutely not. This money is not in the general fund, and that $400,000 will not be touched. It'll still be in that, in that uh, that column.
There's a different pot of money that's going to pay for this.
It's totally different pot of money. And from after, after this, as as uh interim city manager, Erica Storley says, these trees really are infrastructure. And these trees outlive every single street sidewalk, street light in the town, and they need to be treated with capital funds in the future.
All right, who else? Somebody else have their hand up? Alderman Fisk?
Well, I wasn't done with my point. I just, I want to state that trees. But whose phone is ringing? Could you mute him? Um, the trees in. Excuse me? So we have already um a need for our trees to clean our air. We have the waste transfer station. We have a noncompliant tape coat. We have some environmental issues. We have um extreme busing in our neighborhood. So I need more information on if we would be losing trees. I I'm curious to hear Alderman Rainey's proposal where we don't spend $400,000 and we do keep trees for everyone.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Um, this is a, and thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. That that's the whole point of this is that once, once staff made the option of deferring half of the trees for a year, those trees became to, for all extents and purposes, un-inoculated and at risk. And at-risk trees, as we know, as demonstrated, suffer greatly the first year they're not inoculated. They're just left to the, to their own devices. And that's not good. And then the question was, okay, well, apparently staff is going to come up with a uh a list of what trees then are not going to be inoculated. And the first question I asked was, how is that list going to be made up? Is it by neighborhood? Is it by ward? Is it by, how, how do we come up with that list? And how do I let the people in my ward and all of you let the people in your wards know which trees are on that list? Do we tie ribbons around them or or how do we identify them? At the end of the day, funding the inoculation for all the trees is the most equitable thing to do. It's just without question, everybody's tree is going to be inoculated. I've had a number of people um after that vote call me and say, oh, my gosh, um, there's a tree in front of my condo building or in front of my house or in front of my, in my park, and it's a beautiful, my favorite tree. And can we pay for it to be inoculated? Well, that may be fine in some neighborhoods. It's not necessarily fine in all neighborhoods. And I don't think it's terribly equitable to say to folks who have a tree that they love that they have to go out on a fundraising um campaign in order to be able to afford to inoculate their tree. Now, so I'm going back and saying that inoculating all the trees makes the most sense. I reached out to the city manager. I asked if there was a money somewhere that wouldn't negatively affect the forestry department um that we could apply toward the trees. The answer was yes, as the email you got this afternoon explained. Um, plus the fact that Citizens Green or Evanston has stepped forward and and taken it upon themselves to set up a fund, which they're in the process of doing with the Evanston Community Foundation, to raise the difference in the cost of the city funds that could be provided in the amount of $290,000 and and fundraising for the $30, $35,000 balance. And that, to me, is a great show of community support that does not place the burden on any one particular homeowner or group of neighbors or uh citizens who right now can't put money toward their favorite tree. So this is really an answer for, uh, I think, the inoculation program. I I am not terribly happy with how this happened. I'm not terribly uh happy that um we didn't have this information going forward. I think if we, I think if AMPW had been meeting, this would probably have been thought and discussed earlier, but it wasn't. And we were left as a council to try to figure out what in the world to do with it. And by that time, the option to defer half the trees had appeared on, you know, two agendas, and that's unfortunate. So the community, I believe, is is coming together because this is, this is a an extraordinarily important issue. Not only are they, you know, part of our environment, but they provide so many health benefits and all of those things, which I know you know. I mean, I, I don't need to go and repeat all of them because we've heard them from um, you know, from Ms. Shad and Ms. Mann and other folks who have been um, you know, speaking to us. But it's important to get this done. Now, if there is a treatment program that's out there that is better or less expensive or that we should be considering, fine, let's do that. We just can't do it now because these trees need to be injected now or they're all at risk. And I hate to be a doomsayer, and I'm, I usually don't play that role. But that is, that is the case right now. And I trust the experts that we've been hearing from. I'm sorry that, on the one hand, um, I feel that we've been put into the situation, but I would be more than happy to try to figure out with Citizens Green or Evanston and the city a way forward where they pick up as much of the cost as we can. I know they're interested in the equity side of this program and retaining the trees. And I think that's a wonderful thing to do. But right now, we're caught in a place where we really need those trees to be injected. And I am not willing to go to anyone in my ward and say, 908 trees we've just placed at risk. These are not 10-inch caliber trees. These are large, majestic heritage elms, and I'm not willing to do that. And I don't think it's necessary for us to do that. Um, the last part of this, I will say, is that it has not been demonstrated to my um knowledge that there is any cost savings in us not, in us differing, differing the trees, that the cost of us taking down those trees and cutting them down once they do get Dutch elm uh is higher than the cost of us injecting the elms right now. So this makes no sense on, on all sorts of different levels. And I'm, I'm assuming that Erica, if you're still there, if you can just explain once more about, or Hitesh, if you're still there, explain once more about where the money is coming from. And Leslie Shad, if you're still there, uh, talking a little bit about the um, the conversations between Citizens Green or Evanston and the Evanston Community Foundation. Both of those are information that might be helpful here. Erica?
I mean, I can, yeah, hi, this is. Erica, you did?
Second. Uh, I just wanted to say that um there's been a lot of good questions that have been asked and a lot of good discussion that's being had. Um, but once we vote on the current agenda item and then the subsequent uh motion to reconsider, like, there's an opportunity for us to get some of these questions answered and have a further discussion about this. Uh, you know, a yes vote or a no uh on the motion reconsider doesn't bind us to actually doing anything other than putting it on the next agenda uh for consideration. Uh, so we can gather all this information that's been asked about and and bring it back for the council to then make a decision about. But um the the amount of money that um Alderman Fisk was referring to has been talked about a few times uh was um proceeds from interest earnings on the fund balance that's sitting in the capital improvements fund. Uh, so it's not borrowed money. It's not bond money. It's, it's interest that we've earned on the cash balance that sits in the capital fund as we pay bills for our capital projects uh while it winds down before we then borrow more money and replenish the fund. So in a sense, um, it's unallocated, uh, which means it could be allocated for any purpose, uh whether that's, you know, this decision or any other decision. But it's something that we did not think about uh before this past two weeks. So it was not part of the discussion when we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago.
But the issue, but the the issue on this vote, just so we're clear, is uh the difference of opinion between Alderman Rainey, who says we can just uh do a vote to reconsider, and our city attorney who says rule 22 prohibits reconsideration, but rather we'd have to, as a body, suspend the rules unanimously and then vote to reconsider.
Yeah, I I would also add that, you know, we've talked about adding this to the Rules Committee agenda several times. Uh, it has been the past practice of the council uh to do it the way that it's being done tonight. Uh, and therefore, I would suggest that, just like the the other thing that we added to the Rules Committee agenda for cleanup better later day, we add this as well. And we address it in the Rules Committee, but uh for the purposes of this evening, I'm comfortable that this has been the past practice of the council for years.
To al- to allow Alderman Rainey's motion right now to reconsider at the day, yeah.
Well, I mean, I would say after we, after we vote on the actual agenda item that was read, but yes.
Yeah, okay. Alderman Wilson?
Did you call me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, oh, sorry. Thank you. So the, I I agree with our council. This was on agenda last meeting for award of a contract. So there there's a reason why award of a contract is the same night, not weeks later. If you, if you, if you enter into a contract with somebody, you don't just say, oh, never mind, we're not going to have our contract, then no one would want to do business with you. So I think it's an important distinction. If it's just kind of a policy decision on, you know, how we're going to do something or something along those lines, that makes sense. But we voted on awarding a contract. So I don't think, I agree with our council, we can change that prior vote. It's not to say we can't come up with a different plan to cover the rest of the trees if that's the will of the council. So I view them as completely independent things. If somebody wants to put some, you know, put, you know, inoculate the rest of the trees on a future agenda, but I don't think we can reconsider the contract that we've already agreed to enter into at a subsequent meeting. I think that'd be an extremely bad precedent.
That's not what I want to do.
But but that's what we approved. We approved the contract A three last time. I I understand it's not what you want to do. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, quote, reconsidering what we did last time is undoing our approval of a contract. So I think what maybe you're suggesting is a reference to come up with a plan to inoculate the rest of the trees. Is that a more accurate reflection of what you're suggesting?
My, I I think you're out of order, actually. I think we should vote on this first before we haggle over that.
Vote on the suspension of the rules?
No, vote on on this.
On the item itself? Okay, A six?
Well, that's what I've been saying all along. We should vote on A six.
Well, then we fight, so we can vote on.
Okay. All right, is there, we're gonna, let's, let's.
Call the question, damn.
A six has been moved. It was, it was seconded. This is for action. City clerk, could you take a roll on A six? A brutal sole source purchase uh Arboretic fungicide from Rainbow Tree Care Scientific.
Yes, sir. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Staffordan?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Wen?
Aye.
All right, A six passes the city council on a nine to zero vote, and that's for the fungicide used by city staff to inoculate uh the elm trees that the city staff inoculated. All right, now we're, now we're going to go to this other uh issue that we've all been talking about of um reconsider, reconsidering the vote, or is it just a ref, is it a reference? Um, my uh suggestion is, again, city, um, the city attorney uh feels strongly that we cannot reconsider um this item unless we suspend the rules and.
I, I'm not going to suspend the rules. May I make a motion, may I make a referral?
Sure.
I, I'd like to make a referral to, are we having an administration public works meeting on the, what is it, the sixth of June?
June 8th, yes, we are.
June 8th. Um, I'd like to refer um as an action item, the, the matter of injecting all of the trees uh with Arboretic this year, which would, which would really is tantamount to amending the contract that we voted on.
All right, so referral, referral's been made. Uh, Alderman Fleming, can you take us to A seven?
A seven, approval of funding for the demolition of a vacant structurally unsafe building at the 12th um Maple. Staff recommends council approved funding. The cost will be $40,300, which includes disconnection of water. So on a, paid for by Vannett Residential Property Municipal Relief Grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Wilson?
Thanks. Um, what I, I tried to get some more information from staff, but I think the, the information is limited. Um, I understand that this is part of a grant program, but what I'm not clear on is why we would be paying to tear down a private properties building for them. Um, you know, there's not any sort of like, there's not any sort of reasoning or rationale. It's not like somebody applied for a program and they don't have the money or uh or anything. It's just nothing. It's just kind of like, it's like we just offered to tear down their building for them. And um, you know, this is $40,000, and I'm sure this isn't the only distressed building, so I'd rather see us um, you know, take a more thoughtful approach on what we're going to be paying for. Uh, I also tried to do some title, looking at the title. It looks like the property was sold maybe a couple of times in the. It looks like the property was sold maybe a couple of times in the past year or so. I'm not totally sure, but um, there's just no indication that that the, that the people who bought the property need the money or or any of that. So I'm not comfortable giving this, it what amounts to a grant to somebody without any uh thorough vetting.
Can I add to that question before staff chimes in? Because I also had the same question that I didn't get an answer to. Um, and my other question I have for staff was like, were there other costs associated with this block that we've already paid for? A lot of times we pay for lawn care and such for vacant mott. And then why would we release, so there would be a lien for affordable housing? But then we talk about releasing the lien if the person lives in the house that they're going to rebuild after three years, which also doesn't make any sense to me why we're doing that for a private owner. It'd be different if they were going to build affordable housing and release the grant, but it's they could live in the house for three years.
So I'll, I'll address the first question and then I, or the second question, then I'll ask uh Gary Gertis to opine on the others. Um, we actually approved a similar um expense about two months ago for a property very close to the service center. And I had concerns that uh we were passing these grant funds through. This is not our money. This is state of Illinois money. It can only be used for this purpose. Um, and if we don't use it, then, you know, we lose it. So uh my concern was that exactly if we were going to allow somebody to use this money to tear down a house, they would sort of be skirting our affordable housing requirements. And uh, you know, our demolition tax is really what I meant to say, but that that funds the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, so when we did that one a few months ago, it was already so far down in the pipeline that we weren't able to put any restrictions on it at the time. But I said, going forward, I wanted to make sure that we were protecting um that uh and any ensuing money that would be in the Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, so I had asked staff, if we're going to do this again, uh, let's make sure that we work on some kind of uh constraints that uh would make it such that a property owner would not be able to sort of use this as a way to sidestep uh the regulations that we currently have in place. Uh, so that's why those are on there. Um, and then I'll let uh Gary talk about uh the other aspect of this grant for funding program and why uh these homeowners are eligible for this uh this money.
Mayor, city council members, uh, as Erica stated, um, the grant money is, can only be used for vacant properties, um, mowing the lawns, debris removal, uh fencing. Um, but the property standards has used it in the past few years as a tool to eliminate vacant structurally unsafe properties, uh buildings. So um, yes, it is a benefit to the owner, but we also can see it as a benef- a benefit to the city as we are eliminating blight or elimi- eliminating a structurally unsafe building. It's not a program that somebody applies for. Um, these are structures that the city staff has identified as structurally unsafe. Uh, typically it will be a building division staff member, typically me, that would go through and and to make sure that the property is structurally unsafe. Uh, as far as the the lien, um, as Erica stated, uh, in the past, uh, this has just been an agreement between the property owner and the city. Um, we've added the lien to the property and the three-year period, release period is consistent with the Affordable Housing Tax Ordinance, which allows an owner to uh defer the lien, uh, but then release the lien if they've occupied the property for three years. So this is the, how we're approaching this is very consistent with the Affordable Housing Tax Ordinance. If this, in the housing tax ordinance, if the city requires demolition, that housing tax is actually, it's waived, it is not applicable. Um, on these agreements, we're including that in there so that if property owner doesn't drown and sell a property, that they have to remain uh an owner of the property for, like I said, that three-year period.
Okay, Gary, so they have to own properties that doesn't have to reside in the property?
They, it, the ordinance speaks to ownership. It does not speak to residency.
So he could rent the apartment out for market rate and still have gotten his house not torn down for free, have this lien that essentially he'll never, he'll never, he'll never have to pay back because he owns it.
The, yeah, it's ownership. We look to property tax records um for proof of that ownership. Uh, we don't have a mechanism uh for occupancy, uh, so we look into the property to prove ownership for the three years.
Okay, and so if this was an unstable property and we did not have this grant option available, how would we go about having him to demolish the property without, without there being a cost to us or the state?
It would be a cost to us. Um, if we were to, if we were forced demolition, we, it would be, it would be through court. Uh, and typically it would be a cost to the city and then we would lien the property uh for, you know, uh, for that cost. So this at least is a tool that we can use, like I said, to eliminate a struct- structurally unsafe property. Uh, we've used it four times over the last three years. It's been fairly successful. Um, so uh, again, if it were, if it weren't for this, we're not running out of money on the affordable housing. That's what, you know, this, there is enough money to maintain these vacant properties um and still use the, this large amount for, to demol- uh, to demolish a property.
All right, I'm just not, I don't, I'm not crazy about the idea, but if it, I mean, it's not our money, but if we're going to have the affordable housing piece wrapped into that, he should at least have to, if he's going to not live in it and rent it out, rent it out for affordable. I mean, that's the, that's the goal of the Affordable Housing Fund.
Absolutely.
For him to be able to rent it out for market rate makes us, I mean, doesn't help us at all or help our affordable housing goals.
And we, and we can, we can work that into the future agreements. Um, you know, this, this agree, this agreement is in place pending funding. Um, we could work that into future agreements, making sure that it, if it is granted and the Affordable Housing Tax Ordinance does not speak to, you know, it does not speak to rental, it speaks to just ownership of the property. Um, this is an agreement that the owner has with the city. We could work whatever language into that agreement that we, we see fit.
So I didn't push, thank you. Got lots of, lots of questions here. Let's go, Don, uh, Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Ru Simmons.
Thanks, I, so. And and looking at, just looking at the chain of title, it looks like the property got sold in October of two thousand nineteen for ninety-two thousand dollars. And then it got sold again, like weeks later to somebody else for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that was in two thousand nineteen. So to me, that says, and 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 Mr. Gertis, you probably wouldn't really have any reason to know some of this, but it's something, it just didn't look like, um, so I had to look that up. And um, so to me, that says, okay, somebody's buying the property to develop it or do something with it. Because you wouldn't pay a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to sit on an empty, falling apart building that the city has to pay for. So part of my question is, I have to imagine that we have other buildings or structures in the city that probably needs some sort of demolition work. And I, it just seems to me that it would be better spent on the demolition work that the person can't afford to pay for, um, or has been through some sort of uh more thorough vetting, um, instead of just kind of potentially enhancing this person's uh value of their property. Because, you know, they buy the property, they're going to tear it down, build a house, but we just gave them a free teardown. It just doesn't make sense to me. I, and I understand the purpose of the program and it's, and it's a good program, but in this context, uh, it just doesn't seem right. And and I, you know, I, this, again, it's a tool that property standards has used. Um, in speaking with Angel Schnur, uh, she's our, our lead inspector, property standards inspector, and she oversees pretty much the vacant property run uh registration. Uh, and she says there's actually less vacancies or less vacant property issues because the banks are actually starting to step up more to maintain the properties. Um, I've been asked to, I've been asked to inspect probably a dozen properties for, from property owners so that they can avoid the affordable housing tax. Um, and I've gone through these properties and I think one of them was structurally unsound. The foundation was crumbling and we actually used this, it was, the foundation was being shored up, the uh, the structure was deteriorating, it was crumbling. Um, the property had sat vacant for probably a dozen years. Um, we, as Erica stated, that's the profit she referred to. Um, if they're not structurally unsafe and they're just vacant, we're not using these funds. Um, this is not somebody that that can approach the city and say, hey, can you, can you inspect this, declare it unsafe that week so we can demolish it? That, it does not happen that way. Um, these are, these are structures that need to be uh demolished. This one is act, if you look at it, it has a lien to it. Um, the demol- the, excuse me, sorry.
No, go on, Gary.
Um, yeah, the found, the foundation, it, below it, uh, has given sunken and it's, it's deteriorated and the, the whole building actually has a lien to it. Um, so, you know, this was one of the ones that we felt, I, I mean, we did that this was structurally unsafe, uh, and it would be a good use of these funds. I'm not, yeah, it, is it a benefit to the owner? Yes, but as I stated earlier, I think it's a benefit to the city to eliminate that dangerous property and eliminate the blight.
Thank you.
And I guess, I guess what I'm saying is it, it, it looks like he's going to tear it down anyway. So if he was going to tear it down anyway, why would we pay for? And that's, that's, that's what it looks like to me. And I, I, you know, we just don't have a kind of an answer to that question.
Uh, all right, Alderman Ru Simmons, then Alderman Ravel.
So one thing that I did, um, I either misunderstood or was unclear is that it won't be on an owner occupied property. So having um some of the concerns that are being expressed here um in our investment in a development, I understand that there have been, as um Alderman Wilson has found through title search, um, multiple owners and I guess maybe cost prohibitive to do the development. Um, but in also understanding how we could have, can this fund be used? For example, residents that have um violations for garages that have to be torn down? Or does it specifically, specifically have to be um a vacant property? So just really curious about more details of this fund. Um, I heard the city manager state that if we don't use it, you know, we lose it. By when? How much is left in the fund? What other inventory have we looked at for this sort of program? I can specifically think of at least one other property um in the ward that did not qualify for any um support, and I didn't support in waiving the demolition fee because they did not have a um economic need. Um, it was not going to be affordable housing and it was going to be a development. So I think I do have more questions now on um, or actually ask that if we do move forward with this or anything similar in the future, that we do have some mandate of um owner occupancy and um affordability. But I want to hear the rest of the discussion.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, we've got Alderman Ravel, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Rainey.
Yeah, yes, my, my question goes to the owner occupancy um issue because the last sentence in the memo does say that um the lien is waived after the owner has resided in the new home for three years.
Right.
It's, I'm, I'm confused about what, 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 what's really required.
And that was a specific question that I had, and I was told that it was going to be occupied by the developer. From staff. And I've never, I don't know who the developer is. Usually on these things, I meet with a um potential developer. There is some sort of a community meeting. They present what they're doing to the ward, um, even if it is a small residential. And none of that has happened.
Wait, I, I misspoke. Uh, the release of the lien states and who has been the record title holder and occupant for three years. Uh, so I, I apologize, I misspoke. It says occupant.
Okay, Alderman uh Wynn, then Alderman Fisk.
I pass.
All right, Alderman uh Fisk.
Um, yeah, well, I, I noticed the same, the same line, and so I'm glad that that's been uh cleared up as well. Um, and I'm, I'm just curious, um, did the new owner come to the city and ask if there were funds to take down the house? Or how was this property identified as um getting to the top of the list?
We, yeah, we don't have a list, um, this, but no, the owner did not come to the city asking about funding. Uh, there was property maintenance violations on the property that weren't addressed after the transfer of the property. Uh, the owner was actually in an administrative hearing uh with um, with property standards. That's how um, that's how this came to the attention of, you know, that's how this funding actually, uh, the conversation about this funding started uh was during an administrative hearing.
Does the owner own other property in the neighborhood? Is?
I'm, I'm under.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Um, I'm wondering, how long has the property been vacant?
Twelve years.
Well, why? Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't have an exact date. Um, I know it's been vacant at least the time that I've worked for the city, which is over five.
I can chime in. I, I actually have extensive experience in demolition actions and vacant and abandoned properties. If the property is in such deterioration that the city were to need to um declare to have, have take court action to do that, and then the bid has to go out for demolition. It's often extremely expensive um for a municipality to demo a building in that condition. And then afterwards you lien it, but and and I haven't researched the title of this property, but a lot of times the city doesn't recoup back their lien and they end up expending all the litigation costs and the demolition costs to knock down the property. And if it is in such dilapidated condition, it's a known nuisance and probably a liability to the city as well. So I just thought I would offer that um as partial explanation if that helps the council at all.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
Well, um, going forward, and if it, if that's the case and these people have the wherewithal, we could, we could order demolition if it's structurally unsound without paying for it. But one of the things I thought was interesting when I wa- I was looking at the um, um, tax page and assessors page, why, why has this property had um, why has, why is this property had an exemption on it for the last one, two, three, four years if it's been vacant? Well, I'm, I don't know enough about this kind of real estate to know what kind of an exemption can you have if you, if it's vacant? And it's had uh, it's had an exemption for all those years. And interestingly, the taxes have gone from nine thousand down to four thousand. I mean, there's something very fishy about this. I, you don't get an exemption on a vacant property, no way at all, not a chance. So I think that's very true.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Ru Simmons?
Um, I, I'd like to move to hold this. Is, is there any um?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. There's just, there's just so many questions, I think.
Yeah.
Gary, did you want to add anything?
I just, you did, you did ask earlier about the funding. Um, the funding is uh the, end of the year, annual year is May thirty-first.
Oh.
Funds need to be used by May thirty-first. Uh, we have thirteen thousand left in of the seventy-five thousand. Um, part of the thirteen thousand would have been, would be used for this demolition. Uh, we will carry over and and use the next year's funds or this coming year's funds will start June first for the remainder of it.
So we would forfeit thirteen thousand or a forty thousand?
Thirteen. The remaining, yeah.
It's okay. Yeah.
All right, but, but uh, so. All right, we had somebody mo- motion to hold it. I think it was Alderman Ru Simmons and it was seconded by Alderman Wilson. Okay, so it's, it's held, it's held.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so that, so this is uh, that was item A seven, the demolition of the private property at uh twenty twelve, April. That's been held. Okay, let's move uh to item A eleven, Alderman.
A eleven is ordinance fifty-five dash O dash twenty, amending amusement tax. That recommend as option of this ordinance, amending amusement tax include online streaming services to in, to increase the amusement tax and being used with capacity over fifteen hundred audience members. This is for introduction.
Second?
Second. Good, sorry.
Okay, all right, uh, so this item's open for conversation. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I, I removed this one um simply because I'm not going to support the streaming tax.
All right, Alderman Braithwaite?
Um, on page, I think.
On page, I think it's 109, the ordinance is proposing this 7% tax, and it's for a capacity over 1,501. And so I don't know who we've, you know, who our staff talked to. I mean, it only comes out to 200, or excuse me, $2.80 on a $40 ticket. But I think it's important that we at least have that discussion with any music venue that would potentially be impacted before passing the tax. So I realize that it's for introduction, and it should give us some time, but we're, I'd like to know that our staff, that the conversation is all I'm requesting. We'll, we'll get, Erica, you're muted right now.
All right. So I just wanted to note that, you know, this, this is a direct result of the discussion that was had earlier this year regarding the tax and the desire to place a higher level tax on any special events or concerts that would be part of what Northwestern University was approved to do for their two-year pilot. So right now, there's no music venues, to my knowledge, that fit in the for-profit category that have seating over 1,500 that would be affected by this, except for Bull Shrine Arena. If the concert or special event were to be put on by a concert promoter instead of the university itself as a nonprofit entity.
What about out of space? Not now, but for the future.
Right. That's a good question. I'm going to have to ask Kate about that one, and I think she's still on, but I also wanted to address your other question about, maybe it wasn't your question, maybe it was another person's question, but the, the streaming tax. So currently, we, excuse me, we apply a, a tax to AT&amp;T users and Comcast users. And in the past, we haven't been able to apply that same tax to other users of streaming services. So you get your television through YouTube TV, AT&amp;T, DirecTV, or Comcast, you're being assessed an equitable amount of tax based on who you choose to be your provider. And sometimes there's a different, you know, the city of Chicago enacted this tax about a year ago, and we watched it closely to ensure that it was going to stand up to legal challenge. And as more and more providers switch to streaming, it will come a day where you won't have a Comcast cable box in your home. You will get your Comcast TV service through streaming. And so that's something that, you know, we're trying to modernize how we apply this tax. And if we decide that we don't want to do a streaming tax, we have to understand that eventually, when all landlines go away and people are only on mobile phones, we're foregoing all of our telecommunications tax. And when all television service goes to streaming service, which it eventually will, we're foregoing all of our current cable communications tax. And that's, I think, you know, somewhere around half a million dollars to, to more of our annual budget, just for that cable communications tax. And that also funds the PEG channel, the TV channel at 465 and 202 in the city. So this is, you know, essentially modernizing the way that we collect a tax that we don't collect on everybody, but we only collect on people depending on what, what service you choose to have, the exact same service. So Kate, are you on the call? Or Hattash, can you opine on the seating capacity for out of space? I believe that this doesn't have a, it's not, not achieving the intended effect that I think Alderman Braithwaite is referring to in this capacity.
I'm not sure we have a, a number for out of space that we've had in our record so far, so we can find that out.
Yeah, we can, we can get that before the next meeting.
I, I do think they're, we're talking about the space concerts at Canal Shores.
Correct.
Well, anywhere. I mean, they've, they've done them in a, they're over near town.
Yeah. No, I, I think the ones at Canal Shores on their, on the Saturday night, there was like well over 2,000 people.
So just asking again for a conversation with them.
Absolutely.
Have staff reach out.
And then Erica, thank you for your, your clarity on the streaming tax. I, I mean, I understand what it is. My husband works in technology. I think it's just kind of a poor choice at this time when we know people are really hurting financially. And we're looking at, you know, making a budget, you know, just doing a lot of things with our budget to make sure our own budget is flush. And I think, you know, any tax we're passing on to other people in our community who are just really struggling is, is just not the time. If this was January, and we were kind of more into recovery and those kind of things, I know it's not necessarily that much money, but I just think to say we understand you're struggling financially, but here's another tax, is a little bit tasteless. I, I do understand we're going to have to get to this route, because yes, people don't have a home loan or all those things anymore. I just think now is not the time for it.
Understood. I would also just note from record that it doesn't go into effect until October 1st.
October 1st. Okay. Any other conversation on this? All right, the, this item, A11, the amusement tax has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, take the roll, please.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Reese Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Saffron. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Nope.
And Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Item A11, ordinance 55-0-20, amending the amusement tax. Passes for introduction on a six to three vote. Okay, we're going to move now to call of the wards. So we're going to go ahead and start with Alderman Wilson.
Thanks. I don't think I can add anything about Heikki, other than I really love that guy and want to miss him. So that's all I have.
Alderman. Alderman Reese Simmons.
Thank you. Again, I'm looking forward to celebrating the life of Mr. Powell. I'm certain that we will have a community celebration and many others, as his life is deserving. We will have our weekly fifth ward meeting tomorrow, 7:00 PM on Zoom. And I want to say thank you to over 100 of you that attended our reparation town hall with Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. It was a good meeting. We appreciate you attending, and the subcommittee will be moving forward with our subcommittee meetings, which are public meetings. We're looking forward to giving an update to the city council in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Saffron. Alderman Ravel.
No report.
Alderman Rain.
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to say anymore about Heikki. It's just, it's just too difficult sometimes. But I did want to say that our chief of police organized the most, most, I don't know, sensitive tribute to the, to Heikki and to his family, in the way they handled that magnificent procession that we had on Sunday. There wasn't, there wasn't any blip in it, and everybody was just fabulous in terms of behavior and, you know, excitement. But it just moved so smoothly, and it took them about two hours to organize it. And I, I just think our city should be so proud of the way, not only the, the drivers of the cars behaved, but the way our, our police department handled that. And I just want to say thank you very publicly to our chief and to the traffic bureau.
Thank you, Alderman. You did a wonderful job. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, tomorrow is the food pantry at James Park, 11 to, it's late, I don't know, 11 to 12:30, I think. I'm sorry, it's very late. But all you need is an Evanston ID, and we're happy to get you a box of food. And also just continue condolences to all those around our city who have lost anyone during this time of COVID crisis. Just know that our loss is our loss as an entire community, and we look forward to honoring your loved ones with you when we're able to gather.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, and Alderman Fleming, I think that's a really, really important sentiment to be saying right now. I absolutely agree with you. And Alderman Wilson, thank you for bringing up the 1,000 names that were in the New York Times on their Sunday paper. It was just stunning. If you, I mean, I read through, it was just amazing and sobering and, anyway, this is how, how the country is handling it, I think, is, is, is a tribute. And I especially am appreciative of folks in the city of Evanston. We could do better, but we're doing pretty well. So the other, the other shout out I wanted to give, and this is really weird for me, is to J.A. Johnson. They did a resurfacing project in my ward, along Sherman Avenue and some other streets in my ward, and they were fabulous. They were in and out of there with their brooms and the cleanest, most professional operation that I've ever seen. And you can be sure that I was watching. So that was pretty impressive. So thank you, Public Works staff, for recommending them. They were, they were quite good.
Great. Thank, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did share my comments regarding Heikki Powell at the top of the meeting, along with the rest of us. But again, condolences to him and his family. And just like everyone else, I'm looking forward to celebrating his life at the appointed time, along with the other families who have lost, who've lost members of their family. On a, on a brighter note, I do want to congratulate the ETHS class of 2020. Amazing, amazing celebration. My son Peter's included in that, that group. And I just want to say hats off to the ETHS staff and their school board members. I thought it was a pretty cool virtual setting. Having gone through it three times and seeing other people graduate, I mean, there's no comparison to having to sit through 800 names, but there was something different about being able to stand on the couch with a meal. So hopefully, this was our first and only. So wishing all those wonderful seniors who are driving around town acting a little bit crazy, a very wonderful, safe summer. I hope you continue to practice social distancing, and your future is bright. So congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman Wynn, you'll wrap it up.
Yes, I, I want to echo Alderman Braithwaite. I have a nephew who just graduated in the class of 2020, and I think ETHS did a great job with that virtual graduation, which I have to say, many, many of us in the family were really disappointed not to be back there at that ETHS, at another ETHS graduation. But they did make it special, and it was really appreciated. Also, my deep condolences to the family of Heikki Powell. And calling him an Evanston icon is really the only way to describe him and his impact here in Evanston. I also agree with my colleagues on the, the page of, of names with the small descriptions. It, it was really powerful. It reminded me of when the New York Times profiled every single person who was killed on 9/11. And I read all of those, and it's, it, it just takes your breath away. And this 100,000 is equally as powerful. Thank you. That's all I've got there.
Thanks. Thank, thank, thank you. Erica, for the grace of God, do I.
Oh, yeah.
What you have to think of when you see all those names. So with that, we do not have executive session this evening. So would someone like to move a motion to adjourn?
Well, it's tomorrow. Good term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank, thank you, everybody, for, for joining us. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Erica.